Good evening, welcome to the April 10th Select Board Meeting. I'd like to welcome our newest member, Kristy Ferantella, and congratulate Matt Fee on his reelection, and just a shout out to all of the people who did put themselves out there and ran and offered to dedicate their time to the community. It was really encouraging to see so many people interested in having elected positions this year. We do have something at the beginning here that's not on the agenda. We have some prizes for the NRTA, and it looks like both of our prize winners are here. So we're just going to do that before we really get into the agenda.
Good evening. As you know, the NRTA's marketing plan for year-round bus service included a monthly theme and target audience throughout the winter. During the month of March, riders had an opportunity to win $1,000 in prizes from local businesses. The contest was designed to show appreciation to our loyal riders and to provide an incentive for new riders to experience the convenience of the wave's year-round service. So the contest asked people to ride the wave and complete a list of nine tasks to be eligible to win. There were six questions, contest codes on the buses that you had to find and enter, and you had to take a selfie out the bus window with the Lightship Basket Museum in the background, proving ridership. But before presenting the winners with their prizes, I'd like to recognize and thank the following businesses for their support in the contest. Annie's Whole Foods, Cisco Brewery, Darius Salon and Spa, Highline Cruises, Inquirer Mirror, Keeper's Restaurant, Kitty Murtogs, Nantucket Pharmacy, the Nantucket Whaling Museum, the Steamship Authority, Stop &amp; Shop, Stubbies, Bookworks, Easy Street Cantina, and Sunken Ship. And we've really got some great prizes, so thank you to our business community. And I'd also like to recognize and thank Remain for their support of the year-round bus service and their continuing efforts of the marketing strategy. Okay, so we had two winners that missed one question, so we had to draw from a hat. So our second-place winner, missing only one question, taking a great selfie and an annual pass holder, is Benton Killian. And the first prize winner, who is also an annual pass holder and missing only one question and was allowed to leave Concom to come down to collect her prize, Teri Norton.
Now you have to sit through this whole meeting, young man.
Oh, great.
I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda, other than that announcements.
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a number of committee, board, and commission vacancies. They are shown on the screen. The schedule for appointments is that we have a couple of public hearings, one on May 22nd, one on June 5th, and committee appointments will be made on June 19th. There is a lot of information on the town website about these committees, and we certainly encourage people to check that out and hopefully fill out applications and try to help volunteer for the town. We have a Nantucket Harbor Shimo Plus Parcels Sewer Connection Process Public Hearing Schedule, Public Meeting, sorry, that is scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, April 11th, at 6:00 PM here in this room. This is for all of the people that are in this sewer project area to learn the details about connecting and any other questions or concerns that they might have. This is one of several public meetings that have been held along the way with this project. And lastly, town offices are closed on Monday, April 15th in observance of Patriot's Day.
Thank you. This is the portion of our agenda for public comment, for anything that is otherwise not on the agenda. Hearing none. There's no new business that I'm aware of. We'll go to approval of minutes.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of payroll and treasury warrants?
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts? Are there any questions on the contracts? Anything you wanted to note?
I just wanted to point out that several of them relate to individuals that are going to the police academy, which is great news, and the arrangement there is that the town funds the police academy tuition, and the individuals sign a contract to stay with the town for at least three years. Otherwise, they have to pay that money back. And we have a number of contracts for construction of various repairs to municipal facilities, which, most of which was approved at last year's annual town meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a couple of consent items. Henry Sanford has resigned from the Finance Committee.
Move to accept?
Letter of thanks.
Yeah, well, letter of thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I did. Gift acceptances, Ireland Home and Human Services Salt Marsh.
Move to accept with letter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests.
I don't know if we have any individuals here to speak to this, but there was, this started out as in something of a encroachment issue, and ultimately, the town determined that the encroachments, which are these trees, should be kept by the town. So this is basically just an acceptance of them.
Is there a motion? Move to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Town manager's report.
Thank you. So the first item is update regarding development of Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee. This is a group that the board, several meetings ago, agreed to establish, and Rita and I were, I think, charged with coming up with a charge and proposed membership and things of that nature relating to the committee. So that information is shown here, it's in the packet. It's just a draft, so if the board would like to change anything about it, that's totally fine. I think that what we came up with was the idea being a mix of town officials and members of the public, including potentially from groups that have coastal concerns or resiliency experience already, or that type of interest. Staff assistants will be ultimately through the Coastal Resiliency Coordinator, which is a position that is funded for the fiscal '20 budget. We have finalized the job description and are going to be advertising for that position probably within the next few weeks, so that we hopefully would have somebody lined up to start right after July 1st. Other staff, as needed, is noted on there that can come from other departments. We put a term forward of ending June 30th, 2021. That was simply a random date that we thought maybe that would be a time for the board to evaluate the committee and make any changes to it if it so desired, and then we just have a number of tasks that the committee would do. I think what we were trying to go by conceptually was previously when we had initially had an energy coordinator, when that position was initially established. We had an energy committee that had a number of individuals on it, both staff and town officials and members of the public, and they worked with the energy coordinator to come up with various energy types of initiatives, programs, advice on different things, and I think we were trying to model it after that sort of concept, and that may or may not pan out ultimately. So I think it's new, so we would just monitor it. But Rita and I both found that a lot of towns have a committee like this. It's not always called this, there are sometimes different types of members, but overall, they seem to work on mostly the same types of things. Don, if you want to add anything, Rita?
No, just to clarify again that, you know, this, we have a date on it, but it is potentially a committee that may exist in perpetuity as issues change, and that we have plenty of things for the group to start off as, but that will evolve over time as we have new information. And we did look to a lot of communities on the Cape, as well as, actually spoke to someone from Salem, they have a Sustainability and Resiliency Coordinator, and asked about what that position was, how did it come about? And that role really acts as support for the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee that they have. So the committee comes up with ideas and direction, and then the coordinator works to sort of connect those ideas within the town framework. So, again, I think that we tried to not reinvent the wheel and look to what other programs that existed, but I think we really tried to cover as many bases and make it for the context of the issues on Nantucket. And are open to suggestion, if there's any thoughts on these.
When do we need to finalize this for the advertising? These two committees?
Oh, well, they're on the list there that we just looked at. I would say in the next two to three weeks. If people are going to the website to look at what the charges for those committees are today, they're not really going to see anything, because it hasn't been completely finalized yet, but probably before the first public hearing, maybe, that we get, start getting applications for, so mid-April, end of April.
Okay.
I think it's great. I think we need this, and I'm glad you said that this might be in perpetuity. Right? I mean, it's good to have some goals and a term, official term ending, just to start somewhere, but I don't think this, it should go away.
No.
Not, considering we're an island.
Yeah.
No, I think it's good to have an opportunity to review as well.
Yeah.
So when would you want to put it back on for final action to adopt?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Twenty-fourth?
Yeah, so we'll put this and probably the next one back on on the 24th to finalize, in case anyone from the public has comments in the meantime. Andy, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm wondering if you'd consider a member to come from the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a good suggestion.
You'll have to come over here if you have a comment, but we can...
I'm speaking on behalf of the Matticat Residents Association, and I'm chair of our Erosion Control Working Group, which is essentially the same as Coastal Resiliency. And first, I want, we want to thank you all for putting this together. It is really, it feels so good to be heard, and the makeup, you've got community members, you've got people from all the different areas, different parts of the town. I think this is an excellent way to get started, and where we're going to have people who are really dedicated to this. Hiring the coordinator was another great piece of news, because I think we have a lot of challenges on this island, affordable housing, many other things, but keep, literally keeping our heads above water is a challenge that is just going to be getting worse and worse. Global warming is continuing to get worse more quickly, and I think this is, we are, this is maybe just in time. And I'd like to make just, or underscore something, that we get people also as consultants for this, who have an independent scientific background. I think that's really, really important, and we look at consultants where they have, you know, such as in Holland, where they've really done a lot of work about how do you live below sea level? And I think especially for the town itself, we really need to look at that, because that's our lifeblood. And finally, we also would, we think would be appropriate to have someone from one of the Matticat groups on the committee, as well as as part of the community advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to mention to people, there is only one mic tonight, so everyone will have to come to this side. Deanne?
Deanne Atherton from the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy, and we would like to thank you. This has grown out of, as you know, a number of conversations that we've had over the past months, and we're very pleased to see it come to fruition, and also to have, be timed with the normal appointment process, I think makes a lot of sense. We do have a few suggestions, and rather than go over them now, we'll submit them in writing by the end of the week. They're just little tweaks, and we just want to make sure that you would be expecting that, and that would be all right. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we look forward, just a little postscript, we're happy to welcome Matt back, and we look forward, Matt, to working with you, to having a thank you party for all of those property owners who have given us one big Beecheese mitts, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, is, this committee will be making recommendations to Select Board and other bodies, or is it mostly just recommendations to the Select Board? Or what was the idea?
I think the idea was that they would go through the Select Board and get disseminated as appropriate, or as it happens, to other boards, committees, and commissions or...
And I think the membership, we are trying to make sure that representatives from boards that are going to be impacted or play a part, and this would already be a part of it, so that's part of the dissemination already.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll bring that back up on the 24th.
Okay, the next is update regarding development of Cannabis Advisory Committee. Again, the board discussed this several weeks ago, and I think Rita and I also worked a little bit on this one, and there is, again, it's a draft. We didn't find a real model for this in other towns. I'm sure there are some committees that exist, but we sort of went by what we had heard publicly, comments from different people and ourselves, and came up with the membership and the charge that's shown there. And we're completely open to whatever else the board might want to add.
This was another one where things are changing all the time, and we do feel there is a need for this group. There is an initial charge related to zoning and craft cultivators, but we definitely tried to write the scope in a way that it's clear that this committee will be looking at the broader issues as they come up, the ones that we know now, as well as ones that come up.
There will be more changes coming down from the state level.
Yeah, exactly.
Please just state your name.
Congratulations, you too. Good to see new faces. I'm going to be a little political like everybody else. I was hoping for, since I put that article in the town warrant, that we could be a little more forward-thinking, and just with the charge that you want there, I'm going to show you some of the issues, just in what you want to do by September 1st.
Bob, can you just say your name for the record?
Excuse me?
Say your name for the record.
Oh, Robert Cole, I'm sorry. Who am I? I'm sorry.
And I think, I think we already realize that September 1st is probably not the right date.
The first issue's going to be, the number one issue's going to be zoning. I'm pretty sure the town doesn't want to do it in the historical district, have craft growers in the historical district. How fair these new rules are going to be? And what I mean by fair is the cost to start up. Are you going to have to buy another piece of land? Issues like that. How big? The smallest license that the state gives out now is 5,000 square feet, which for Nantucket, and I believe that the town really thought about this, considering Green Lady only has a growing capacity of 2,500 square feet. There has to be a way that maybe we can limit it to smaller, but that's where we have to ask the CCC. We're going to get there. Ground cover issues, what size lots? If somebody has a 5,000-square-foot lot and they want to do something, how much should they be able to do if somebody else has a 3,000-square-foot? Where we're going to do it is going to be an unbelievably complicated issue, and how fair we do it. The CCC has already said they're willing to work with us. State representative brought it up at the town meeting, that they're willing to work. We're a special place, and we need to make special rules. Number two is how many we want to give out. I mean, that's going to be a very big issue. How many of these small licenses, if we can do it in a right way? How many licenses do you want to give out as the town? You know, do you want to stop?
Well, Bob, I think all these issues are what we're establishing this committee.
Excuse me?
This, all of these things are what we're establishing this committee to address?
I have a point to all of this. I really do.
Okay.
The point is, there's all these, all these issues that I brought up, and this is just the start of them, they all involve a sensible cannabis policy, one that encompasses everything, not with a timeframe to September 1st. Take a year like I asked in the warrant. It's going to be very hard to get the number of members, the Board of Health, if he wants to be on it, God bless him, but I don't think that that really, I think a policeman would be, police enforcement would be a better issue. I've done a little reaching out for people on this committee already. I've talked to the Chamber, I've talked to ACT Natural, and I've also talked to the law enforcement office. I asked Jack McGrady if he wanted to be on it. So there's a lot of issues that if we don't, if we spend a little time over the next couple weeks and think about the future, and if we really want to do a whole issue of a sensible cannabis policy and looking towards the future, this isn't dealing with, you've been put in the position by rushing, let's not rush into this. So what I'd really like to see the Select Board take another week or two to talk amongst yourself, with me, to make a more broader committee that can work on all these issues once over the next year, and try to bring in as many people as we can involved. It's going to be hard at first. It's easy to get the erosion people, because it's an issue. This issue is a brand-new issue, and you're treating it, we should treat it as something brand-new and look into every issue before we jump into that type of committee. Okay?
So we're going to take this back up on the 24th, and you can definitely send your comments into town administration, or to any of us.
Oh, I reached out to it, too, but I wanted to wait to see what the new board was. There was no sense in me driving you crazy going into the election. So now's the time, and the summer's a hard time to get things done, especially with this type of committee. So I just would like the board to think about what I'm talking about and try to do this once. You might have to listen to too many things and all of that, but I think there's enough people, as we gravitate towards the opening. One of the issues, Green Lady right now, the state told them that they have to have lights on all night. That's an issue the way the town really doesn't want, lights on all night. But the state said to Green Lady, you need to have it. If you drive down Amelia Drive. And a lot of these issues are going to come to a head when we open the first one, nevertheless what we've done in the past.
There's still a lot for us to learn about this whole industry.
There's a lot for everybody to learn, everybody on this committee. It's brand-new. Some of it is going to be having to go to the state and asking for special rules for Nantucket. They were willing to do it once, and I can't see why they wouldn't limit the size of tier licenses if we wanted to, to 2,000 square foot. All these, there's lots of issues.
Okay.
And I do just want to say that everything that you've brought up are the kinds of issues and questions that have started to come up between talking to growers, talking to planning, talking to zoning, looking at what other towns, like Truro, for example, are doing. And that is really where we realized, we cannot come up with this. We need the people who are involved in the industry, the people who have the specialized knowledge, to come together, sit at a table together. I do feel that we would like to see micro-businesses grow, which I believe are under 5,000 square feet. We want to give a leg up to small craft growers, and that may be an unrealistic timeframe to come up with appropriate zoning, but that really will be the charge of the committee to decide what is going to be a realistic timeframe. So, you know, I do think that what you're concerned about will be addressed by this committee, and I do think that there will be an understanding that if we can't do it in six months, or 12 months, or two years, that there will be an appropriate timeline.
Are you volunteering, Bob?
I sort of have already.
Just making sure.
I don't work for anybody else, and...
We'll expect to see your application.
To help the town learn.
I think we're good with that for the 24th.
Okay. I jotted down a bunch of notes, so I can make a little bit of redlined revision for next meeting, and maybe Bob will send in some comments.
Great.
2019 Annual Town Meeting and Annual Town Election Follow-Up. There is a spreadsheet in your packet that is something I typically prepare following town meeting, that helps us determine who is going to do what for implementation. The only things that really I wanted to bring to the board's attention, because most, most everything else is administratively handled, is the items highlighted in yellow. So at the time I prepared the sheet, the annual town election had not quite happened yet. So Article 11, as we now know, the Old South Road Fairgrounds, New Town Improvements, did not pass the election, it passed town meeting, but not the election, so that project will not move forward. I don't know if you want to have any discussion about, about that. I wasn't really sure. Sometimes you like to have discussion about doing something different in the next time, or you want to take it under advisement, or whatever.
I think there's things there that we have to try to find a way to do. I think New Town Road has to be done. I think some of the sidewalk improvements need to be done, even if we can't get the road, do a rotary there now, I think there's improvements we should try to find a way to, to do somehow. If it's going to come out of a sidewalk fund, or come out of something else, because, you know, New Town Road's getting a lot of use right now.
And Old South, and Fairgrounds.
It's exactly what I was going to say, Matt. So we need to move forward, whether it's next year's capital, with New Town and sidewalks on the south side, going from the Inky to Amelia.
I agree with that.
Yes, same.
Article 13, the town pier, passed both, so that's good to go. Same with Article 14, appropriation for the landfill. Article 15, the appropriation for the Public Safety Auxiliary Building, did not pass, so it passed a town meeting, but not at the election, so that will also not move forward. So at least in the interim, unless we're going to put this back forward again, we are going to have equipment that will be outside, and will have to be replaced sooner rather than later. We were hoping that it could get undercover and have a longer life, but I'm not sure that's realistic.
Jason?
I think, once the fire station gets built and they move over here, it'll be interesting to see how many vehicles are out. This is the kind of stuff we look at Capcom, and this is why Capcom approved this, because they, I don't have it in front of me, we do a little math about the degradation of all the vehicles and what that costs us over 10 years, and a building like this doesn't quite pay for itself, but it's close, and so that's why it was approved at Capcom. So I think once we see all the cars that are outside, you know, rusting up, vehicles, whatever it is, equipment, it'd be nice to see what, how many are there, and what does it look like? What's the cost? So if we do want to bring this back next year, we have some numbers to look at.
Yeah, and we looked at that for DPW, I think it was, it was saving some town on the Cape, you know, sort of $400,000, $500,000 a year in sort of vehicle expense, putting them undercover, so.
Okay, so that is something to continue reviewing for maybe the next fiscal year, going back to Capcom. 16, the appropriation for widening Orange Street and creating bike lanes on either side, that did pass. 17, the appropriation for the Surfside Area Roads passed at town meeting to... 17, the appropriation for the Surfside area roads passed at town meeting, did not pass the election. So far, the early feedback that I've gotten back is we should think about phasing this project and not make it so big right off the bat.
I, I think it's important, it's, it's not exactly a part of our strategic plan going, you know, from the corridor, from Mid Island to downtown, but it is, you know, the more bike paths we have, the better roads we have, the more people ride their bikes, less they're going to drive their cars. So, it, it kind of does go with our goal number three of lowering single-use automobile rides. So, I'd like to bring it back in some fashion and keep talking about it, whether it's just Lovers Lane, splitting it up somehow. I also think when the voters look at this, what was it, five, six million?
Six point two.
Six point two. Six point two and 20 million for housing and other stuff. You know, if a couple of other things were pulled off, that might have passed. Just my, my gut. I don't know what you guys...
Might have been too much at once.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can look at phasing that next go-around.
I'm seeing some laughter from the audience.
Article 34 was a citizen initiative to install stop signs or actually to, to seek an appropriation for the installation of stop signs at Bartland Surfside. Town meeting actually does not have the authority to direct that. That is in the authority of the Select Board. If the board wanted to proceed with those stop signs, we have a process in our traffic regulations that allows for temporary rules, which could be stop signs, trying them out for a period of time. I included the excerpts from the rules in the, end of the packet item here. Earlier today, there was some internal discussion about if the board is so inclined to try these out, maybe we get them in next week, keep them in for 30 to 45 days or so and have a reevaluate, have an evaluation of it at the first board meeting in June, something like that. It will require some effort from DPW to install the signs. There probably does need to be some line painting. There's a bit of a conflict with the crosswalk there, so that's going to have to just be sort of worked out, but if we want to give it a try, then let's give it a try.
What does everybody think?
I think the vote was close and I think this is one way to try and answer what will be the best way to approach that stop sign or that intersection. So, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Looks like you're getting head nods from everybody to go forward.
I'm skeptical.
Do you want to vote?
I think a vote would be helpful.
Okay. Jason, go ahead.
I'm skeptical that, that it's, that it's going to work for the intended use, but I do want, I do, I want to see it. I think we should do it, you know, sooner rather than later, see how it works with the schools and, and then think through all the things that DPW has to, you know, crosswalks and do we need a detail there for the first day, first couple of days, just to remind people? I don't know how we, how do we do that for Lovers Lane and Old South?
We've done it in a mixed fashion. We don't really have a standardized procedure for it. I think in this instance, we would probably maybe put up some sort of a flag on the stop signs themselves and do some public outreach about it and...
It's tough though, because people, people are coming back and haven't been here. I mean, how many times did we go through the stop sign at Old South when it first came up? You'd be driving along and go right through it. So, I think, not me, but, but I do think that, that, the same thing's happening in the rotary. There are people that aren't seeing the rotary and driving right over the top of it. So, you know, so I think we've got to really sign it well.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Put them up temporarily?
Temporarily for, you know, 45, 60 days.
And then have a public hearing?
And have a hearing and see the results of it.
So, we'll schedule the public hearing for probably the first week of June?
Well, do you want to, yeah, we could...
Assuming that, that they get up next week or so.
I'd second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Chair, I just wanted to, if, are we okay with in 30 days if it's not working? Are we prepared to take them down quickly and will we have that discussion? Is that more of a DPW Town Administration discussion?
I think the removal would need to come back here.
Okay, all right. Just want to think through it. If it doesn't work, how do we take care of it?
You'll hear very quickly.
There may be mixed opinions on failure or non-failure.
Yeah. That might actually, now that you mentioned that part of it, might be something to think about what our criteria is going to be for success or not.
It's mostly public safety issue, I think.
We can work on that internally, I guess. Article 37, the appropriation for affordable housing, passed at town meeting and passed at the election. There is, was already some email back and forth today with Housing Specialist Tucker Holland and I'll probably be having a meeting with him and some other representatives from Affordable Housing Trust and other various people to start sort of formulating the groundwork for the program that is going to be used to administer this. And I'm sure we will be back before you to be reviewing that in the next several weeks.
And I just, there were a couple Affordable Housing Trust members that wanted to be here today that could not so on their behalf and as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, just thanking the voters for the support. It is, it's, it's massive and I think we're in a position now to really take this head on. And we'll be starting with developing further the land acquisition criteria, which does, will in a way dovetail into this citizen warrant article. And we expect that the citizen warrant article will probably take about six to eight months for us to thoroughly develop a program that will then come to the Select Board for review.
Great.
Okay, lastly, I think Article 75 was a citizen-sponsored initiative regarding a rental regulations study. The motion at town meeting was, the Finance Committee motion was a no-action motion, which was passed as no action. However, there was a Finance Committee comment about the Select Board engaging professional consultants to conduct this study, so I'm not sure if you want to proceed with that or not.
We, we did talk about this a little bit earlier today. The, the short-term rental registration that's required by the state is actually going to go into effect on July 1st, so that it might be wise to have that up and running and maybe talk about this. I was in early fall in terms of how to proceed and maybe we could get some, do a little bit of research on what type of consultant we'd be looking for and what the criteria would be.
What kind of, would we, would we be looking for funding in FY '21 for something like this? Seems kind of on the larger size of a consulting project. Right?
I haven't even begun to think about what that might look like.
It's most likely in FY '21, right?
We don't have any funds appropriated in FY '20, so I would say probably FY '21, yes.
Seeing for timeframes and budgeting.
So, fall's appropriate to start talking about it for a '21 budget.
In the fall, right.
I think waiting to see and, to let that registry go into place in July would make sense and then we get started and I think we'll know what we're dealing with better at that stage, but I would support the, the FINCOM motion.
That's the end, unless any of you have any questions or comments. At some point soon, I don't think we quite have a date for this yet, there has been some discussion about a joint Finance Committee Select Board meeting to do a town meeting follow-up. What went well, what didn't, what should we change for next year or do the same or whatever? And as soon as we have, at least I don't think we have a date for that, but as soon as we do, we'll get that out to you.
So, Select Board reports and comments request to designate Community Preservation Committee as a special, special municipal employees. Yes?
Come on your board.
Sure.
Okay. We have a quorum of HTC members here right now. And so, I'd like to call that meeting to order if I could. Okay, so, I'm calling a meeting of the Nantucket Historic District Commission to Order. It is 6:40 on April 10th. The present at the meeting at this time are John McGlaughlin, Stephen Welch, and myself, Ray Poehl. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Right. Can I call? No. Whose chair of Historic District is now? On the... We have a quorum of H-SAB members too, so we can call that meeting to order.
Brooke Birbergen for H-SAB. We've got Lucy Dillon and Angus MacLeod here from H-SAB and is there anything else I need to say?
Just call to order.
Call to order. Okay.
So, back to the special municipal employee designation for the Community Preservation Committee. When, from time to time, you can see there's a list of all boards, committees, and commissions that have already been designated as special municipal employees and that typically comes up, typically comes up when someone on the committee is going to be doing some sort of work for the town or maybe representing something in front of a town commission or board or committee. And we do have an individual on the CPC who I'm very pleased to say, I didn't talk about this with you ahead of time, Ken Bogrant is, has been hired as the town's real estate specialist. This is a position that we've been trying to fill for quite a while now and he accepted it, so thank you, Ken, for that. He will start in a couple of weeks, but will remain on the CPC and so that's the reason for the designation.
So, I'd make a motion to approve the request?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, welcome, Ken. Okay, discussion as to Historic District Commission Oversight of Town Sidewalk Improvements in the Old Historic District. So, I know that there's a lot of interested people here tonight on this and board, other board members. I just want to set the stage a little bit that it's not a public hearing, so I will allow some public comment, but I'd, if you could keep your comments relative, you know, to a couple of minutes and not repeat other people's comments. We will open with, Jason's had a number of meetings with interested parties and Libby's got some background to talk about and Rob McNeil is here also to answer questions as needed.
Did you want to start, Libby? I'll follow up.
I could, sure. There's a sheet in the packet that just contains some background about the current downtown sidewalk improvement project, which has been underway since at least 2015, but discussed off and on well before that. We have appropriated funding to start and continue the project. I think the board knows that the first area of focus is, is listed in the background here was straight wharf up to Easy Street and that was something that prior board members were very much supportive of and talked about quite a bit and has been addressed and widened a little bit and improved and trying to meet board goals of improving pedestrian traffic around town and accessibility and condition and all that sort of thing. Several weeks ago, maybe, maybe not quite a month ago, I had a meeting with a variety of people, including the Chairman of the HTC, the Chair of the Board, myself, DPW Director, Chair of the Commission on Disability, and the Commission on Disability Coordinator and it may have been somebody else, I can't remember.
Who's that?
That was it. And we discussed this whole issue that was beginning to arise about historic preservation of the sidewalks and how we should be more sensitive to it or address it in a different way than we were. Subsequently, there were a number of public walkarounds, public discussions, public meetings here and elsewhere about this. And what our informal sort of ad hoc group came up with was what was recommended in the, in the sheet there, that we could, I mean, it's, it's a suggestion, establish a work group comprised of a member of the Planning Board, the HTC, the Select Board, the Commission on Disability, the Tree Advisory Committee, the Nantucket Historical Association, and the Nantucket Preservation Trust to work with the town to implement the downtown sidewalk improvement plan for, for one thing. And also, the group potentially could prepare guidelines and criteria to be followed for the restoration, restoration, sorry, repair, restoration, improvement, preservation of the sidewalks, all of that. Maybe there are different areas that require different treatment depending on what their use is or where they are. I know that there's a idea that, or feeling that the island, Old Historic District, Old Historic District is just one area and all should be treated exactly the same. That may or may not be feasible depending on different conditions, different factors, different, just how they're, how those things are used, how those areas are used. So, we were just thinking, maybe we come up with these guidelines and they could be reviewed by the HTC, they can be, we could have a public meeting about them and get as much input as we can and then the board could adopt that and that's sort of the standard going forward, but with ongoing input from various interested parties, including these officials that I mentioned in this informal work group. So, that, that's basically the recommendation and I know there was, there's been some discussion about it, but I don't know how it's viewed.
I just want to give a little bit of background, my journey in all of this, to the public people who are listening on the radio and watching at home. I started the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee five years ago. It's under the MPDDC and sidewalks and safety and ADA compliance, bicycle safety is really, really important to me. It's my number one priority. So, two or three months ago, when all this was brought to our attention, I was really, yeah, yeah, okay, safety first. And I really felt that way. But the more walks I've taken with Penn, the more I've talked to Hillary, the more I've read on what the people have sent me, I have changed. I, I believe that we can have both. I believe that we can have safe sidewalks and we can 100% preserve everything that's there or even make it better if there's, if there's a way to do that. So, I'm really looking forward to this, this conversation tonight. I think we're heading in the right direction. I just can't say how valuable the experience was, was walking around with people who do this kind of work and preservationists around Judith Chase Lane and Main Street and all, kind of all over downtown. And I encourage you, any board members, to do that, but I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. I'm really, I know not everybody in this room might not feel as positive as, as I do, but I really think we're going to have a good process regardless of wherever, where it lands and who's involved, to make sure that, you know, our sidewalks and streetscapes and everything is preserved. I just wanted to give you my journey, how, how far I've come along just in two months. And I want to thank the community and everybody who's kind of helped educate Jason on all this.
We do also have counsel here to answer questions if needed. Who from the public would like to start? Kevin, just state, state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Kevin Custer, 83 Main Street. I'll say the same thing I said at one of these meetings previously. I'd like to get back to your very first line.
The mic.
I'd like to get back to your very first line on your memo here. Talks about discussion of HTC, of HTC Oversight. I think that HTC and there are some, there are some legal opinions out there that say that the HTC does have jurisdiction. I think that's where we should start this conversation. However we develop the guidelines, if it's a committee or a work group or whatever, we have a very, we have a good process in place with the HTC. It might not always work the way everybody likes it. It might not be staffed with the right people right now to do this, but I disagree with town counsel. I think that, that the HTC does have jurisdiction and I'd like to know if not, why not and how we get that resolved first.
Hello, I'm the HTC Chairman, Ray Poehl, and I'd like to follow up on some of what Kevin just said. Our normal process, the process that we use every Tuesday night, is for an applicant to file an application that outlines the scope of work. We review that over a course of a few weeks, make recommendations, and then a certificate is issued that certain set of drawings are to be followed. is issued that certain set of drawings are to be followed, and then that, that's sort of the, the right to move forward. What I believe is, is missing from that right now is sort of the oversight and sort of the final sign-off. When a certificate from the HTC is issued, at the end of all that, when, when things are closing up, John Headen goes out and inspects the work. If it's all done according to the plans, great, gets the sign-off. If it's not, it comes back before the, the board and we decide what sort of measures need to be taken to correct the work that was, was done improperly. I would say further, on something as important as the roadwork that we're discussing here in Historic District, there should really be, and I believe this is part of that text, oversight throughout the process where you don't have a calamitous thing happen that's only brought forth at the very end of the project, that people are all made aware during the course of the project. So I would only say that one, one part of this discussion should be what the sign-off is and how everything is kind of cleared up at the end of the project. Thank you.
Rita?
I would just like to echo Ray's comments on the oversight aspect. I do think that HTC has an important role in this, but I think that, I think that this is something, the attention and care to detail and historicity that we put towards our sidewalks shouldn't depend on the people in the moment. It needs to be codified into the way that we look at the way we do these repairs, and I think having a preservationist as a part of the project, as a part of the discussion for oversight is essential. I have worked on projects myself where everyone involved cares about the history of the project and has the utmost workmanship and care and attention to detail, but having a preservationist on a historical project benefits everybody. You can ask questions, you can make changes, and you don't wait until it's finished to then realize that you, you haven't done it properly. So I, I think there is a role for HTC, and I, but I do appreciate Ray's comments on there's a need to have oversight and have that be something that comes up on every project that we have in some way, shape, or form, and if we have those people on island, fantastic.
Thanks for waiting as I made my way around. Mary Bergman from the Nantucket Preservation Trust. I think Rita's point about oversight and expertise is a really good one. You know, as we know, we've been talking a lot recently about Nantucket being a national historic landmark, which is under the Department of the Interior, and there are guidelines for how to properly restore historic structures from the Department of the Interior. Some of the standards are when you repair, reuse something, you want to use what's there, you don't want to alter the way that it looks. If you need to repair something, you want to make sure that the old and new harmonize with each other, so you're not creating like a counterfeit, you know, a replica of something that was never there. And really to preserve what's distinctive, and that includes materials, construction techniques, and craftsmanship, and I think that's something that's so unique about Nantucket. You know, Penn can like look at the curb and can see a mark in it and know when it was made, and I think that's really fascinating. And that really proper preservation is maintenance and making sure that you're doing minimal work so that you don't have to let something, you know, demolition by neglect. We see that with houses, and I think that can happen with the street too. So I guess the other point that I wanted to make on behalf of the trust was that it seems like we're sort of having a hard time discussing policy because we're seeing two different treatments of one Old Historic District, and there is one Old Historic District. And any guidance about the materials that are being used should be based on an understanding of the use and need, and maybe that's going to change, but we should at least, you know, look at how do we think that that's going to change, as well as looking at the materials that, the historic materials that are at the location. So there are important historic structures throughout the Old Historic District, on Main Street, on Easy Street, on the waterfront, Lower Main Street, Upper Main Street. It's one street. So, you know, we worry about this idea of starting to carve out and making exceptions for areas. So I think we need to think of the Old Historic District holistically, and we'd really urge, MPT would really urge, a documentation of the streets in the Old Historic District is a first step. One of the ideas about preservation is that you can't protect what you can't measure. So if we're not really sure what's there, we can't protect it. So, and Nantucket is of national importance, and I think that we have a good opportunity to set the bar very high for other historic districts. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Montgomery, 33 North Liberty Street. That's a perfect segue into what I've been noticing, I've been to both of the meetings, the one we had with the DPW, and I think it's very important, the issue of getting a professional, a craftsman that knows what they're doing when they put back sidewalks and the cobblestones on Main Street. And I will only bring up one example. Anybody that goes between the Pacific National Bank and the Methodist Church up by one Liberty Street, if they look and see the three straight rows of cobblestones where they took them up and put them back, it looks like they put three wires down there for about 50 yards. And I don't want to see that down on Main Street. So it's important to get somebody that knows what they're doing. Thank you.
Hi, Ginger Andrews, 1 Stone Alley.
You can pull that down, Ginger.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. I've always wanted to be taller, but we have to work with what we get. I wrote you a letter, and some of it is very repetitive with other people, so I won't read it to, but I will give it so you can have copies. I just want to say that what we found at the Pacific Club is that if you set a goal of preservation and you look for the appropriate people, you can find them. Preservation is a whole world, and there are lots of experts, there are preservation and sensitive engineers, craftsmen, that I really hope that the select board could set a goal of historic preservation, and then how you implement a structure to create and support that. You know, I'm not an expert at that, but that would be my request. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hillary Hedges Rayport. I have, along with my family, a home on the cobblestone section of Main Street, and I've been following this issue, and I just want to thank you all for having this discussion. It's really wonderful to see all of you, that you, I don't mean to be patronizing, but that you care. I mean, obviously you care. I think, I think it's really clear, it's become really clear, everyone on Nantucket is here because it's special and it's historic, and that's part of what, what makes it special. I, I do hope that we can talk a little bit more about the legal aspect. I know we have the letter of the law and we have the spirit of the law. I see Arthur is here, maybe he can talk a little bit about the, the letter of the law, because I do think we have to be careful about abiding by our own statutes. But then I think we also have the spirit of the law. I found some interesting information going back to founders' intent, so to speak, and looking at the people who created the Historic District Commission and what they wanted to achieve and why they created it. I just want to read a little bit of something from the 1967 guidebook to the Nantucket Historic District Commission. It says, "The policy of the Historic District Commission is simply stated. It is to preserve as unchanged as possible the old structures built before the middle of the 19th century in their original settings and conditions. And it's also the policy of the commission to maintain the fundamental harmony of the historic community by approving new structures and changes in old ones only when they will blend harmoniously with the traditions of the era before 1846." Realizing that that was really what they had in mind, that it wasn't just, you know, a building here or there, it was the structure, the unity, the whole community was powerful for me. But they also realized that it's complicated and that Nantucket has to change and evolve. We have to welcome new people, we have to welcome new problems along with the new people, and we have to address and be resilient to those problems. So what they said about that is that the complicated problem is to maintain the beauty, charm, and historical authenticity of the community, yet let it live and prosper with the greatest possible individual freedom. While the law gives the commission power to enforce its decisions, administration by force is undesirable and usually unnecessary. We believe that an understanding of the purpose, policy, and goals of the Historic District Commission will generate the wholehearted cooperation of everyone sincerely concerned with the future of Nantucket." So I think that's a beautiful sentiment, and I think we have a whole room of people and a whole panel of people who are very concerned about the future of Nantucket and recognizing that our history and our beauty is, is part of that. So that leads us to the question of what should we do, and you've made a specific proposal, which I think is a great starting point. I just want to say, because I think it's very important, we would not be having this discussion if we were simply talking about repairing the sidewalks as they are. And in fact, living on Main Street, I would really, really love it if the sidewalks could be repaired, and I'm speaking specifically about the areas that are in front of the three bricks, that are all pushed up by tree roots. I think I've seen in the past, public works officials come, take up the loose bricks, take up the loose stones, smooth out the sand, get an arborist to trim the tree roots in a responsible way, and put the stones back so that they're more or less flat. I know that that was done in front of the Athenaeum very successfully with the bricks. We would really like to see more of this, like tomorrow, as soon as possible. If we have the money, if we have the people, I think we have the know-how, we would really like to see that. This policy that we're talking about is about this recent trend, and we've seen some unfortunate effects of it, of this, you know, everything needs to be lifted up, everything needs to be modernized, we have to stick it all in place with Portland cement, or, you know, it's not worth doing. And I'd really, I, I think if we're talking about making our sidewalks safe, we really do need to have a bright line in this policy between what is reconstruction and when do we do it, or what do we think about it, and what is restoration, and recognize that to the point that Mary made, these are well-defined terms. These are not up to us to decide, oh, it's going to be a reconstruction. It's not a marketing term. It's actually an accepted term that's defined by the Department of the Interior, and we can look at these standards. So that gets to the, the idea of what are we going to do? I think the idea of a committee is a positive thing. The question that I would have is who is going to actually do the work? So somebody needs to draft a policy. It needs to be a good policy. If it is a good policy, it will save us all time, and it will allow the HTC to move this to just a consent agenda. You know, we, well, I shouldn't speak for the HTC, but the, the aspiration would be that a good policy will save time. I do have an example of a very comprehensive policy. This is from the city of Baltimore. These are design guidelines for historic landscapes which are protected in Baltimore. So I'll leave this for you, and I'll also send you the link. It's really a gold standard for protection. But getting to how we get to that, I just don't see this nominated volunteer committee of people with varying levels of, of experience in making policy. I don't see them being able to write a policy unless they are resourced with an expert consultant or a staff. So I think if we're going to have a successful process, I'd really, really ask that we think about who is going to do the work and how do we make sure that it's of the level that it needs to be. There have been sidewalk policies written in the past, there's one in 2009, and it's not really gotten us where we need to be, otherwise we wouldn't be talking about it again. The last thing I want to say is just to underscore the point that Kevin made. Having the HTC involved to give authority over this, I think is critical. Having the HTC as an authority ensures that existing conditions are documented, that guidance and policy is followed, that the process is public and transparent, and not just that it's public and transparent, and that also there is a power of reversal and enforcement, and this is what Ray said, and I think that's very important. So those are the things I'd like to see considered. Thank you.
As a segue to that, Sandy Kendall, Roberts Lane. I would, I'm, I'm concerned that precedent is being set wherein the DPW is making changes to historic structures, that is our sidewalks and streets, without applying to the HTC, and, and there's no precedent for the town being exempt from HTC regulations. So I'm simply asking you that, that that be a consideration. So, thank you.
Arthur? You just have to.
For the record, Attorney Arthur Reed, I represent the owners of 86 and 88 Main Street, both properties being involved with the proposed sidewalk reconstruction, which the DPW has been looking at closely recently and had a meeting about. Following through on the point that has been made about the HTC, we certainly think that the HTC has a big role in this, and the fact that, as indicated, that they'll have a role with the committee that would be dealing with it is, is important, but I think it goes beyond that, as the last couple of speakers mentioned, and Kevin Custer. We believe that the HTC does have jurisdiction and that the town needs to apply for a certificate of appropriateness for any work that it's going to do in connection with, with this, with these historic sidewalk and street structures and scapes. And they are, they are structures, there is no question about that. I haven't done extensive research on the subject myself, but the HTC has been provided with a legal opinion from the Boston firm of Anderson and Krieger, which I've seen, which would indicate that in fact the HTC has jurisdiction and that their, their approval would be necessary in connection with any such work, and I can provide a copy of that if, if that would be of use. I, I understand from what Libby said at a recent meeting that there is an opinion of town council to the effect that the town need not apply to the HTC. I haven't seen that, I don't know what it says. I'd be interested in, in knowing what it says, but we believe that the HTC does have jurisdiction, and after all, why not? Why, why should the town not, why should the town in general not subject itself on a situation like this to review by the HTC, which is after all, the town board that is charged with this responsibility, that has the expertise and knowledge to deal with the issues, and they should have the ability to pass on it. So we would request that, that issue, obviously you're not going to decide that sitting here tonight, but I think you certainly need to take into consideration the extent of the HTC's involvement and jurisdiction over this. Thanks.
Thanks, Arthur. Do we want counsel to speak to his opinion?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. George Pucci from KP Law, Town Council's office. I would respectfully suggest, first of all, before somebody disagrees with my opinion, it would be nice for me to actually render an opinion. I understand that people sometimes will disagree with an opinion, but it would be nice to actually know about what it is that's being disagreed with, because I'm, I'm not aware of providing any type of written opinion to the board about this specific issue and the, the downtown sidewalk and street work being done by DPW or proposed by DPW. Certainly, over the years, I'm, I'm sure questions have arisen here and there about ordinary maintenance activities of the town, like some type of, you know, pavement issue or placement of a barrel or something like that, and I've, I can't pinpoint, you know, written opinions or anything like that, but commonly, or not commonly, but routinely over the years, certain things have come up that I've definitely told the town manager and the director of PLUS that, you know, told the town manager and the director of PLUS that, you know, the town didn't need to apply to HDC for that work. But that work, those opinions, to the extent they were provided, has nothing to do with, you know, the work at issue before you now, tonight. I did take a look at this legal opinion that was provided, that Arthur referred to. Respectfully, I don't find it that much on point. So a couple of issues in terms of, this has to do with HDC jurisdiction. And keep in mind, when I provide you with advice or recommendations, that only is our opinion on the parameters of the law, and, you know, what options you may or may not have in accordance with applicable law. But our opinions do not intrude on policy issues for you. So no matter what my opinion may be about HDC jurisdictional issues, it certainly doesn't go over and, you know, into the realm of the issues that have, you know, been raised before you about proper preservation activities, the importance of cobblestone streets and brick sidewalks, and maintenance of, you know, the historic character of the downtown, and also issues with regard to who would have most expertise to consult with whoever's doing this work on behalf of the town. So, you know, legal opinions on jurisdictional issues have nothing to do with those policy issues that, you know, are for your consideration about how you want to go forward on this DPW work. So just kind of summing up, right, I think really the relevant issues are in terms of HDC jurisdiction. Number one, there was a case cited in this opinion provided by Art Krieger, and I know Art Krieger and Anderson and Krieger. So they cited, they basically, in their opinion, said that the board may rely on the Martins Lane decision to say that there's not HDC jurisdiction. First of all, I'm unaware that the board has ever taken any position under the Martins Lane case, or with respect to any jurisdictional issue involving this work. But to the extent you were curious about that Martins Lane decision, what that case is, is a 2009 case. This was, this predated when we took over as Town Council in 2010. And it was a decision of the Superior Court by Judge Nickerson in the Superior Court. And Judge Nickerson, I should give by way of historical background, is a Cape and Islands Justice that has, you know, that's where he's located, and he has definitely concentrated a good part of his judicial activities in the course of his career about, you know, Cape and Islands, municipal boards, and permitting issues and the like. And what Judge Nickerson did in that Martins Lane case the first time around, when it was under prior Town Council, was he overturned an HDC decision with respect to a curb cut and proposed driveway on a residence on Martins Lane. And he said a couple of things that are of interest, at least for jurisdictional issues for you. And one of them was not to do with brick sidewalks or cobblestone streets, but with regard to a slab sidewalk. He talked about the fact that a slab, you know, is not a, quote, "combination of materials" under the HDC Act. So he found that, you know, cutting into the slab sidewalk would not be something within the HDC's jurisdiction. The other thing he said in that case, and by the way, that case had nothing to do with town projects. It was a private project to put a driveway on this residence in Martins Lane. The other thing that Judge Nickerson said that is of, you know, relevance to these considerations is, he pointed out that the statute, the HDC legislation, speaks to exterior features that are viewable from a public way. And he said that that did not include jurisdiction over the public way itself. And he said that, you know, a sidewalk is part of the public way, and therefore, there's not HDC jurisdiction under the Act for the public way and the sidewalk, which is part of the public way. Now, he said that in 2009, and it's a decision of the Superior Court, so it can be, it can be used as persuasive authority on something, but it is not binding precedent. So, and this kind of goes to what I was saying at the beginning, is I'm unaware of the town taking an official position. You know, the Martins Lane case of 2009 provides us with carte blanche to do whatever we want in town. I'm unaware of anybody taking that position. But what the judge held in that case is certainly of relevance if you wanted to follow up on that. Now, taking that one step further, and again, it's a Superior Court case, which can be taken as persuasive authority or rejected, but it's not binding authority. It's not the authority of a appeals court or the Supreme Judicial Court. You know, with the importance of historical preservation issues that you face on Nantucket, the board has very reasonably not taken a, you know, an aggressive approach, taking Judge Nickerson's opinion in that case, and seeking to do exempt town projects from, you know, HDC jurisdiction. But the only reason I talk about it is, it was a case that was cited in this opinion, but that's really what the relevance is. And you can do with that, you know, what you want. It's a policy decision, because again, you can accept it or reject it as persuasive authority. What I found more relevant, really, to the board's consideration in this case, and I spoke to the DPW director prior to this meeting, is the HDC Act provides exemptions under the language of the statute itself. So, you know, one comment came up, just sort of an aside, that, you know, when we took over as Town Council, somehow there were, you know, differing opinions about jurisdictional issues or whatnot. But that's actually not the case at all. I mean, most of the opinions, I can tell you, that have been rendered by us over the years have been just taking out the HDC's enabling legislation and reading through it. And it's an amazing amalgam of many provisions that have been amended and not over the years. Every time you read it, you almost come up with a new thing, you know, a new jurisdictional issue or procedural issue or something that comes up. There's a lot in this legislation itself. So the first place I always look for, if you asked me an opinion on something, would be the language of the statute itself. And under Section 5C, that's five, small c, it provides exemptions. And the first one is, "Nothing in this act shall be construed to prevent the ordinary maintenance, repair, or replacement of any exterior architectural feature within the Nantucket Historic District, which does not involve a change in design, material, color, or the outward appearance thereof." So that's it. And at the beginning of this, I, without being able to recall offhand over a nine-year period, there have been occasions when, I'm sure, I've been asked by the director of PLUS with regard to bike path or placement of a bike rack or something like that, or repair to a public way, you know, and I would cite this and say, no, the town doesn't have to apply to HDC if it's a, you know, an ordinary maintenance, repair, or replacement issue, that you're not changing the exterior appearance thereof after you're done with that. So that would be kind of an exemption that would come up a lot with regular, run-of-the-mill DPW-type repair and, you know, maintenance activities of areas that they're maintaining on behalf of the town. So, you know, so if you take that through, if you take a, like, the suggestion about, you know, there are parts of the sidewalk, I walked to one tonight from, you know, walking to Town Hall, there's a part where it was like a, it was a tree, and it looked like the roots had raised the surface, so you sort of walk up and down on, like, it was like a roller coaster, walking on it. And, you know, if you're talking about DPW, you know, maintenance of something like that, if they're not, if they're seeking to repair or maintain it, in other words, this has fallen into disrepair because of a drainage issue, or it's settled over the years and it's become wavy or uneven, you know, that would most likely fall within an ordinary maintenance and repair type of situation. A glaring example that I could think of that would not fall within this exemption is if the DPW started paving, you know, portions of Main Street of, you know, they take the cobblestone surface of the public way, and they don't like that because it's, you know, the vehicles get bumpy going over it, and they decide to just pave it over. That would be something that isn't ordinary maintenance and repair, because you're changing the outward exterior appearance of that cobblestone street by doing that. So that would be an example that wouldn't fall within ordinary maintenance and repair. There's one, another exemption here that is definitely of relevance to your consideration, DPW is on this, is, so there's the ordinary maintenance, repair, and replacement exemption under 5C. And there is also a further exemption. "The Act does not prevent the meeting of requirements certified by a duly authorized public officer to be necessary for public safety because of an unsafe or dangerous condition." So that type of issue would go if you're, you know, again, not a wholesale revamping of the, changing of the exterior surface, like, you know, brick or cobblestone to pavement, but something like some sidewalk enhancements or improvements for, to prevent a tripping hazard, or if there are crowds at a certain time on a certain sidewalk to make sure that a wheelchair doesn't get pushed off the side of the curb, or there's some safety issue that is, you know, certified by town personnel as necessary for public safety because of an unsafe or dangerous condition. If I wasn't paying attention tonight on the sidewalk I was walking on, I would have fallen on it. I mean, it's basically an unsafe condition, and that's, and I've heard some of that tonight about concern over, we've got to fix the sidewalks. So two exemptions are at issue. The ordinary maintenance and repair, and then when there is, if it's applicable, there's another exemption for issues of public safety as certified by, you know, the public officer undertaking the work. So having said all that, yeah, again, so that has to do with, the HDC does not have jurisdiction to prevent those types of activities if it falls within those exemptions. That doesn't, though, intrude on your policy decision about how you want to undertake DPW repairs and replacements or enhancements of anything concerning downtown streets and sidewalks. You could choose to go to HDC or have him do that. You could choose to use them as an advisory committee. You could choose to undertake this process that was prepared by the town manager, that you are trying to create some type of oversight committee or, and/or, a committee that includes the necessary expertise so that, you know, historic preservation issues are properly cared for in this process. So, you know, I hope I've been clear about, you know, where we're at in terms of jurisdictional issues, but that doesn't, you know, again, intrude on your policymaking authority over this.
Thank you. I think Jason wanted to speak.
I just think we started to hear a lot, and I'm writing so much down, I just kind of want to hear a little bit from a board. I had a comment, and we can still take, if you, obviously, if you want to, take public comment, I just kind of, I don't want to get lost if we keep listening. So I think there were some interesting points that George made. With your tree root example, if it's a public safety issue, if, let's say it doesn't have to go to the HDC with those exemptions, and DPW goes to fix it, but there's historic materials there, and there's some historical craftsmanship that kind of Mary alluded to, how do we have oversight? We can argue all night if it needs to go to the HDC or not, but how do we have oversight that, that can, enforcement that can be fixed quickly and properly with historic materials and the craftsmanship and historic homes that are butted upright against these sidewalks? That's where I think this gets really tricky. I know we all know that, but I just kind of wanted to say, my quick opinion right now is, I'm just, I'm less concerned if it has to go to HCC or not, I just want to have some kind of oversight and some kind of process. And I don't know, if it does go to HCC, where does it go? Does it go through the HDC at some level, some process? Those are just my thoughts right now.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, kind of going off of Jason, whether it's going to the HDC or not, I think it goes back to the guidelines that Hillary was talking about. And if we establish this group that could set the guidelines, that could be kind of the standard to look in between, if the HDC needs to be involved or not, but at least having something to go off of.
Yeah, I think it should go to HDC. I think the town should be a leader and should set the example. I think part of why it should be going there is to document it. If it doesn't go, it's not documented. If it's not documented, you know, the proper materials and the proper methods may not be employed. So I think that it's very important that it goes to HDC. It may not need to go, you know, for every, but we're planning to document everything, but, you know, once we know that it's documented and the proper follow-up is there, then maybe it's, you know, a fairly simple thing, but it isn't fairly simple right now, sort of one. Number two, I think, sort of, some of this reminds me of the phone calls. One person says one thing to another, and they pass to the next person, the next person. By the time you get to the end, it's something completely different, and I think that kind of has happened a little bit here at times. You know, I think from a policy standpoint, you know, we should be a leader in preservation here, where, you know, the island should be a leader. We shouldn't be, you know, throwing away materials. We should be reusing them. We should be doing them the right way. I don't know if anybody read the document we received. It was about 50 pages on conservation, historic ground services. It's fascinating, and it's, you know, we say, oh, what do we have to do? We know what we have to do. You know, how you do it, and what you use it, and how you use the materials, and what weights it can handle, and, you know, one of the biggest things that comes out of it, can't drive heavy trucks. You can't park cars on these things. They break, you know? And so I think that how you do it is right, is there. The question really for the board is, you know, are we willing to direct that that be done properly? And I think we should.
Can I say something? I'm worried that the HDC process with the Certificate of Appropriateness doesn't fully get at what we're looking for in terms of historic preservation. Because, and I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that shouldn't be the process or not, but I feel like there's real concern with how these truly historic materials are handled and taken up and put back down in the core old historic district. And the HDC's jurisdiction really is to review exterior architectural features and not necessarily process. You know, they look at a plan, they look at, is it red brick or is it stone? They don't, I mean, it's like looking at a historic house, and you can't say how it's framed on the inside when someone renovates it. So I just want to get at what we're really trying to take care of here, and whether the traditional Certificate of Appropriateness is the right avenue, or whether actually working with a team of people who are true preservationists on all of the process makes some more sense to incorporate. And I don't know the full answer to this.
I think we can do both.
I'm just starting to talk about it.
Yeah, I think, what I'm thinking is, you can do both. You apply, you say, here, you know, here's how it is now, here's how we plan to restore this, here's how we plan to restore this, you know, built environment, these structures, our streets and our sidewalks, and then they can sign off and say, great. And then if it isn't done that way, you know, then we, as part of the process, you figure out, how do you oversee it? You know, Rob is an engineer, or has someone on site that's overseeing it. We're doing it the right way. And at the end result, they sign off that we did it the right way, the way we said we were going to.
But that's not in their jurisdiction.
Well, they have to sign if you don't do what you're supposed to do. You know, if you say you're going to paint your house a certain color, and you don't paint it that color, or you're going to build it a certain way, you don't, they don't sign off on it. It's the same thing. If we, if we as a town say we're going to If we, if we as a town say we're going to follow, you know, the proper restoration, proper preservation, we should do that. And I think if we don't, they should, they, you know, they should, HDC should be our watchdog on that. If they're not doing that, if they're going to the text and saying, you know, oh, well, look at this, just line three, paragraph two, that we really can't like worry about preservation because we can only worry about the colors or something, then we're lost. You know, then we really need to fix our HDC. If we're going to try to like, you know, nitpick that, I think we really, they should be leading on, helping us do this.
I think Bray wants to come down.
I just wanted to, to add to what everyone has said. I agree with you, Matt, that we should absolutely be taking a leadership position on this and not looking for exemptions or trying to skirt anything. But it doesn't make sense to me that the HDC is the first stop. I think they might be, I don't know exactly where they fit into the process, review, recommendations, guidelines. But I think that what is missing here is a commitment to using professionals and professional expertise. I think this is too important to, to have the first stop be a changing group of volunteers, even though we are volunteers as well. But I think ultimately the things that have come up tonight are the conversations around preservation, maintenance, craftsmanship, and as well inclusivity as we modernize. And preservation is, is an element of the HDC's purview, but the maintenance, the craftsmanship and the inclusivity are not. And that's something that I would expect professionals to take into consideration. So again, I do think the HDC has a role. I think having good policy is important, but I, I don't think they're our first stop.
I should have clarified this when I made my first statement. I didn't mean to imply when I was using the analogy about applying to the HCC, the normal course of business for us, that that was sort of the process. I'll be the first person to say, having reviewed all this, that this is a very holistic thing. Arborists need to be involved, all kinds of preservation people need to be involved. The HCC would, would like to be involved in that process in terms of oversight, but we're absolut, absolutely not suggesting that we're the only people that should be reviewing the work there. I think it should be a group of very professional and trained people. Thank you.
Andy, I think Steve was standing up first.
Good evening. Stephen Welch from over on Waydale Road. First of all, I'd like to thank the town manager and the select board for taking this up. It is an incredibly important topic that speaks directly to our identity as an exceptional national resource with respect to not only the maritime heritage, but the preservation tourism. And that's really, one of the things people don't really understand, no, is within the Act, one of the things the HDC is entrusted with is the economic benefits that come from preserving our heritage tourism. So I'm not going to speak to the rocky road of, of the legal stuff. It is a rocky road. That's what we're dealing with. But I did want to support the concept that the idea of a work group profession, with some professional resources, perhaps preservation historian type consultants and the HDC, if it does come to fruition, that they have oversight are not mutually exclusive. And in fact, I think they're critically important to be linked. Part of that, just some general comments would be that the work group would, as has been stated, would formulate not only guidelines, but definitions so that we're all talking with, we, we, we understand what we're talking about by using the same words that mean the same things because they're defined within the guidelines. Because for instance, restoration means something very different if you're out there doing a job and you're not necessarily a preservationist or you're not following the national guidelines or other criteria. So if we define those, it would be very helpful. I think the other thing is that this work group could take on an advisory role, and this is what I was saying about the HDC and the work group are not mutually exclusive. The HDC is not typically, as Madam Chair had said, not involved in the process aspect of work. However, if the work group were also tasked with issuing advisories, suggestions or recommendations on particular projects, it could be very helpful to the HDC in weighing in, in making determinations or otherwise being involved. Because frankly, my concern is the efficiency of the process. We don't have the, that professional expertise on the HDC. And I would have some concern that personal proclivities get involved in the decision making as opposed to really resting our determinations as a body, as a public body, the HDC, on the advice of professionals in the field. And I think that the work group concept might be a good way to advance suggestions and recommendations for review and certificates of appropriateness. That makes sense for the community, both in terms of what work needs to be done, what needs to be preserved and how. And in closing, I'm just going to say, part of that is because I, I would tend to agree that while the old historic and the core are terribly important and preservation and restoration of certain elements are important, there are areas within the community, within the old core that are not what we think. You know, I, we, we have clients and they see a picture of a rose on a cottage and they think that's what Nantucket is 365 days of the year. We all have a mental image of what the old historic district is and what the sidewalks are, and they don't necessarily always translate into something that is, a broken down piece of concrete is not necessarily a broken down piece of granite. And the restoration for those two things are two very different things. And that's why I would suggest that the work group could play an important role in kind of deciphering what gets done where and how in terms of recommendations. So thank you for listening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Quickly, Andy Lowell, Fort Nuane. I live at basically the end of Main Street where all the sidewalks actually end. But I think, a lot of people stop by my shop, talk to me, give me their opinions. And I think a temperature I'd like to, to share with you that's out there is the proliferation of razor sharp edged granite curbing that has taken place over the last 20 years around town. Now we're seeing it being introduced in town. I believe the curbing that has been around town forever, it didn't get rounded over by tires running over it for the past hundred years. It was rounded over by craftsmen. And a lot of the EMTs, they're popping their tires on, you know, emergency vehicles ruining aluminum rims. It's expensive equipment. And this sharp edged granite curbing, personally, it scares me. So I would have to imagine, it scares other people also. The minute it gets introduced into a street, you're narrowing that street down. But this, the granite curbing is available with however you want to define it. It's a relieved edge, a chamfered edged, a worn edge, and, and I, and it can be done to the sharp edged curbing that's already out there with the right proper technique, torch, a hammer, the right guy. And, but I think one of the biggest problems of all of this and why you have so many people here is because of the introduction of all this sharp edged granite curbing. It doesn't blend. Just my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
My bread trucks lose a tire or two a summer to those things.
Good evening. Holly Backus, Land Use Specialist for the town. However, I'm here as a Nantucketter. I just want to emanate as, as a preservationist by degree. I think it might be a good idea if this work group maybe look out to other jurisdictions. We're not the only historic district in the country. We're not the only historic district in Massachusetts to see what they're doing and, and maybe go that way. Thanks.
Thanks, Holly.
Hi. I hate this speaking in. I've been quite involved with this whole thing and I've got a lot of respect for you people who just give up your time to do things for the town because it's a life sucker. I'm just like, I don't know how you do any work other than this. But so I've, I've kind of been involved from the beginning. And, and for me, I, I would love some clarity on the issue of complete streets because I think there's, there's two different issues going on. I think we all want to preserve the integrity of downtown. And once you know a little bit about, about the materials that make up, it becomes even more special. But the complete streets initiative creates a whole other set of problems that precludes the use of, you know, reusing the same materials and also rescales everything. And it's the rescaling of things, you know, the big bump outs, the, it's those sort of things that, that I, we find most erroneous, the sort of the Keep Nantucket Real Group that I'm part of. So I think once we can get some, I mean, ideally, if we could just give up on the complete streets thing and stop trying to superimpose a suburban urban initiative on 200 plus year old streets, I think that would sort of clear the way to just having a sensible argument about repairing our streets going forward. And it would be great if we could, if we could make a decision on that. I think it would become a whole lot easier and we could find a whole more common ground if we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've been.
I just have one more little thing.
Briefly.
Kind of follows up on that. Kevin Cusford, 83 Main. I would like to see if the board would be willing to put a pause on any further work done down by the Pacific Club. My understanding is, is that it's moving ahead with a plan that I don't think most people have seen. And I'd like to request that that be paused until we can get some of these other things worked out. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First off, Peter and I see public office in your future. I think, you know, the Pacific Club area, I don't think it's on the, in the queue for this year. So I think it's by, by nature, it's already paused. Nothing's happened this year. I think it's 2020 plan wise. So we have time. I'm hoping that this process gets set in place before those kind of areas are looked at.
Okay. So we're at about an hour. I think that we'll end this for tonight. Lucy.
May I make one quick comment?
Yes, quickly.
Lucy Dillon. I'd like for everybody to notice that we've got these lovely paintings along the walls and all of them are harborscapes or seascape with the exception of the one painting of the Pacific Club. I'd hate to have that updated.
This was meant to be a discussion tonight. I don't know if the board's ready to take a formal action.
I think, I think it's just, we're trying to figure out how to.
Discuss this more.
Yeah, how to move forward, what's next steps.
Anyone have any thoughts?
I think we got somewhere. Rita, I liked what you had to say of, tell me if I'm, you know, rephrasing it wrong, that HCC is not the, not the step, or maybe it's not the first step, or it's, or it's a step in the process that we're trying to figure out. We don't know if it's first, second, or fifth, or, right? And I think we all agree that we need professionals. I'm trying to think, like, what are we all kind of shaking our heads about tonight? Like, we need professionals.
Do we agree HDC is a step? Does everyone agree with that?
I would say it, I would say it has a role. I'm not quite sure that, I, maybe that's saying the same thing.
I don't know that the traditional certificate of appropriateness is necessarily the right step in term, because we're talking about whole stretches of streets potentially. I'm just, I'm not sure. I think the HDC definitely plays a role.
Okay, what if you're doing, what if you're doing this section of the street? Could we, could the certificate of appropriateness be for this section? I mean, I, I just think that you've got to break it down. I don't think we're going to do all of Main Street in, in one go. I mean, anyway, I just.
And, I mean, technically, the entire island is this historic district. Do, what do we want to apply to Mid-Island? I mean, I, I mean, I just want to raise these things. I see all over Mid-Island, there's brick here, there's concrete here, there's pavement here, there's different curbs. I mean, a lot of this has to do with financials, but are we going to establish any kind of protocol for the whole rest of the island, especially as we continue to do more and more paving and sidewalks? Right now, we're talking about the old historic district, but the HDC has more jurisdiction than that. So where, where, where's the line in the process and how is that defined? Because there's nothing else that only goes to HDC in the old historic district. There's more, there's stronger guidelines in the old historic district. But once HDC has jurisdiction, they have jurisdiction over the whole island. So I just want us to be clear on that. On what role they're going to play in the process. Advisory might make some more sense.
Could it, could it be that they play a role in the place where the HCC has the stricter guidelines? Should they play a stricter role in the streetscape and the built environment there and not as much in the hinterlands? Not, you know, maybe in Equinnett or Sconsett Shore, you know, stuff that's 200 years old. But, you know, I just think there's some common sense that we could apply here. You know, I don't think anyone is saying that.
It's just going to be consistent.
I understand, but I, you know, so I just think not, not, anyway.
That's all I'm saying. I'm still thinking about it. It's just got to be consistent. Because you, you can't say you, you only have to apply within these boundaries when that doesn't apply to any other certificate of appropriateness. Everywhere else, you have to apply for everything. So once it becomes under this jurisdiction, we are talking, in my mind, about everywhere. And it's obviously a less strict review process, but I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sure because I think the concerns are much deeper in terms of process in the core.
I, I also would worry a little bit about breaking it up into specific projects. I think that if we're going to look at it as a historical streetscape and viewscape, that, that's the, that's the view that whomever's reviewing it should be taking. So just getting a certificate of appropriateness for one section doesn't make sense and might lead to inconsistency as well. I, I'm, I'm happy, I would be happy to bring this up again. I also feel that one of the, at this point, one of the main things that is missing from the recommendation is that commitment to professional resources and professional consultation. Some of the things that we're thinking about now, again, what order it comes in, I think should be fleshed out by a work group, by people with various backgrounds and opinions on this. I am happy to bring it back after we've thought, thought about it a little bit more.
Does everyone feel good about that?
When will we bring it back? It took about three months to get this here. So when do we get it back?
Within a month.
Yeah, that's great.
Does that seem fair? We'll look at the agendas and see.
Yeah, three or four weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great. As long as it doesn't, you know, go on summer break and then we're up against trying to do stuff again next year.
No, no.
I don't think that's going to happen.
We'll just look at the, what's on the agendas and try and gauge what the best week is, if that's okay. We'll make sure everyone knows. Okay.
Couple of questions. Are we supposed to be preparing anything for your next discussion?
I think we need to, I think we need to talk more about, or maybe staff needs to talk more internally about other, other ideas to, for this process. I think I'm hearing from the board that, that the recommendation doesn't quite cover it. It covers parts of it.
I think we're trying to figure out the process and the order. And we all agree HCC plays a role. How do we add in professional, professionals, right? And then the overall, overarching thing is how do we build the trust with, with the public that it's going to be preserved?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't want to see a thing where we just turn, turn it over HDC and we, the, the application goes in, it gets built and then, and it doesn't get looked at until it's a sign off time.
That's not, no, I agree with you. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, but I think that, you know, sort of, we, we sort of operated as, we were, we're kind of operating under the guise of, well, it doesn't really have to go there, this is whatever. And we, you know, if you read what we had, some of the things that we've done, you know, putting some of the, you know, some of the stones and concrete and things isn't really the best practices. You know, it, it's not the right way to do it. So I think, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And, and I think that's, so maybe, you know, and I don't think. And, and I think that's, so, you know, and I don't think, say, you know, and if, say we look, try to look at the whole thing, I don't think we can analyze the whole street and bring it to the HDC. So the process has to be, what's the right way to do this? And, you know, and follow those steps. There are guidelines, there's plenty of stuff written about it. And we, as a town, should be following those, you know, fully. We should be the leader in this. We shouldn't be, you know, sort of not doing it. So, you know, so however we get there is what I am in favor of.
Would it be a revision of the recommendation to include some of the things we discussed? And maybe a consideration of some of the things other towns do? Because again, this has been done many times over for us to consider. And I also think, Matt, that, I don't think of this as, oh, it doesn't have to go to HDC. I think it needs to go to, brought to a professional level, and HDC is a part of it. So it's not, for me, this isn't an issue of trying to skirt something, or again, look for exemptions. It's about making sure that it's done well, again, in perpetuity. And that's workmanship, craftsmanship, maintenance, and again, inclusivity.
Okay. I think I get it a bit about some comments that you've made, professional resources, specific process, how to actually apply preservation techniques, how the guidelines actually be prepared, what do other Massachusetts towns do, craftsmanship, things like that. So we'll try to work some of that in. Meanwhile, as you all know, there is a project going on in Washington Street right now to reconstruct that sidewalk. And we've been approached by the American Legion to extend the repair around, into town to Salem Street. So we wanted to know how the board feels about that. This would assist them with a handicapped accessibility issue into their building. And the thinking was, if it extended to Salem Street, it would also go towards the board's goal of more improved pedestrian accessibility downtown. Leads over to the bus area as well. And the sidewalk area from Salem to about the Legion is pretty narrow. So while we're doing the sidewalk project there, we, the idea came up at the initiative of the Legion, should we continue the sidewalk down? So we don't want to do that unless the board is agreeable. And obviously, we aren't going to have a process that we've just discussed in place in time to do all that quickly. Because the idea would be to do it as soon as possible.
I don't, I don't think there's any widening, right, of that. It's on a truck route, it's too tight. So it's just-
The sidewalk that's being installed is wider because we had the encroachments removed, so-
But not wider going towards the road.
No, but it's wider going into the property-
Right.
Where encroachments were happening.
Right.
But, and had the encroachments not been there, the sidewalk probably would have been wider.
Right. But the, from American Legion to Salem Street, there's no widening. That's what I'm talking about.
And the original, if there are any original curbing and things are staying, and you're just widening it and adding the same material?
I would defer to DPW director on that, but I think that's the general gist.
Because some of it, I don't think is necessarily the widening in certain areas. I think it's, it's not, it's the materials and the methods and not replacing some of it. I think it's more of a, sort of-
Rob McNeil, DPW. So the proposal before us was, again, from the Legion, having to do with some ADA accessibility issues into their building. They came out seeing the work that was being done from the town pier to roughly the lobster trap, and just said, is it possible to extend? So the idea would be similar to what has been done so far on Washington Street, would be to remove any precast concrete curbing that's currently there, and replace it with granite. We do have samples, so it would be similar to what's happening there now, minus the widening back to the property line in encroachment areas, because there are no encroachments along that stretch. The piece that we're talking about now is getting something similar to what someone brought up tonight about the modern granite. We do have a sample now with chiseled top, it's custom-made. And we are getting another sample with a relieved edge. So we can start to really, when this group starts get going, we can have some stuff to take a look at. So I think the future is bright. And I'm encouraged, I've had similar experiences to Jason and others that have been involved here. I'm encouraged that there's some, some serious talent around. And I think we all have a shared goal of keeping historic Nantucket the way it is.
So if it's an ADA issue for the Legion, does that mean that there will be a change in the height of the sidewalk to fix their ADA issue?
No, I think it's the, the way that the ramp was originally installed was just not proper. So it's essentially correcting the situation that's there.
When would you be looking to do it?
So the intent is to complete the current project by Daffodil weekend. This next stretch from lobster trap to Salem Street would be completed before Memorial Day. So roughly the same length, and it's roughly the same effort.
Without having a process in place, would it be a reasonable thing to try taking it before HDC? For this section, to document it?
Well, we certainly don't have plans. This is basically a remove and reset. It's basically putting the material right back. And the replacement would be with, putting back materials that are not precast concrete.
I think somebody from the public had a comment.
I just have a quick question. Is the curbing in front of the Legion precast concrete right now, or is it granite? Does anyone know?
I just, I didn't realize that the work was going to be progressing past the lobster trap. And I'd just like to bring everybody's attention that at the Artists Association Gallery at 19 Washington, we have a terrible problem in that every time it rains, the water comes in. So we've been trying to figure out what we should ask for, and we didn't even know this was going on. So this just brings up the whole working with a butter problem that's been occurring.
I think it just came up. There hasn't been an opportunity to even talk to the butters past the Legion. And that might be a very good thing to, that could be fixed with this project. But I'd have to defer to Rob on that.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Michelle Elze of 55 Union Street and 43 Pine Street. I'm also on the board of the Preservation Trust, just to talk about establishing due processes as the committee has been going over all night. The Legion is a historic structure. The Preservation Trust is working on holding an easement for the building. And I think that a standard needs to be in place before you change the sidewalks in front of another historic building. Thank you.
Right now, they're all broken concrete. I walk it every day. It's con, it doesn't mean we shouldn't go through a process, but it's all broken concrete. You know, I think the only reason this came up is because the Legion reached out to the town and asked if they, if we could further it down. So that's why it wasn't on any plan. It was more of bringing it to the board as a, do we want to keep going further?
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem where the process comes in here. Because I'm sure everyone would support replacing broken concrete with, with brick and granite. But it probably does need to be documented. And I don't think that plans need to necessarily be drawn, but you take photographs and you show, and you show this picture of the material that you're going to replace it with. But it's, it's a change. And we don't have a process yet. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I of course support replacing those sidewalks, and I support, I support making everything safer, but I don't know how to move forward without, without doing something. And I don't see why HDC couldn't review it if it's not going to happen until May. Right, that's what I said. You could just do photos and say, we're replacing this section with this type of brick and this type of curbing.
What if we had a preservation specialist advise us? Tell us what needs to happen there and then do it? I mean, do that as part of the process. What is that, an hour consultation? I don't know. I mean, I just, how do you do it? What's, you know?
And are we hiring someone? And where's the budget money for that? So we have, there's a lot that plays into this.
I understand.
But it could be a test case for this one thing, to see how it goes going before HDC with it.
I understand, we have reservations on this, as we're talking about a process. But I am, I am comfortable using this as a test case. It's a truck route, it's, there's cars everywhere. There's no, there's no widening, there's no modernization of it. So I feel, I feel comfortable with it. Whether there's pictures taken, it's at the HDC, that's fine with me. Or whether we bring somebody in as a test case.
George?
Just wanted to point out, if you go the HDC route, there's also a, there's also a finding of non-applicability in the statute that's provided. In other words, the HDC would find, issue a certificate of non-applicability. So if you're talking about, I don't know anything about this project, but say you're talking about really a, kind of a no-brainer issue about public safety. We need to fix this because people are going to fall on it. The HDC could issue a, if you chose to go there, the HDC could issue a certificate of non-applicability.
Yeah. I mean, I was also thinking, in some cases, it's a like-kind replacement. But in this case, we would actually be improving the material. So it's, really is an alteration.
That would go more, right, that would go more to a certificate of appropriateness than non-applicability.
Arthur?
Just a helpful suggestion on that last point. After all, the HDC has a consent agenda. And something like this that, you know, is, should be a no-brainer could be handled that way, rather than even having to go through the process of the certificate of inapplicability, which actually would be based more upon the concept that it's not visible, and it is visible. So I think, you know, the consent agenda provides an easy way for the HDC to deal with things that are obvious and, you know, don't need a great deal of input.
I agree with Matt that it's actually more professional expertise, and I understand we don't have a budget. I, already, I think that, again, to me, that if we're already talking about it being a no-brainer and the HDC can just put it on consent, that's not enough. When there's historical buildings involved, there's some interesting points being brought about, the Pacific Club and the foundations and the different heights. And I don't know enough about it, but I already feel like we're going down a route of us making judgments on what's, you know, what's an obvious choice. Fixing it, making it accessible, making it safe is absolutely a priority. But I just, I'm not really in favor in the name of process of moving it forward without coming up with a better process.
If I could just make one more comment. I think what we're seeing right now is so interesting. It's like the sausage being made, right? So how do we get to this point that we all want to be in? So I want to make a comment about the budget. I know that there is budget for sidewalk repair, and I don't know why that would accept design. So we have surveyors who come in when we do expensive lifts, regrading, concrete, that all has budget. So I guess I just have a question of, if we have budget for surveying and we have budget for design, why wouldn't we have budget for previewing so that something could simply go through quickly on a consent agenda? Or that it could be flagged? The second thing that I would say is, going forward, one thing we would really like to get done is this historic material survey. So that, to speed things along, we would actually have an inventory prepared. A lot of this has already been done by Preservation Institute Nantucket. If we could prepare a historic inventory and log it with the town, it would make it really easy to have a centralized location where you can say, instead of guessing, well, it's new, it's old, it's concrete, it's granite, what is it? We would actually have informed people having prepared this with the anticipation that everything eventually needs maintenance. Thank you.
So where are we?
Well, I just want to make sure, full disclosure, I do own and run a coffee shop in this area. Just want to, I figured everybody knew that, but I thought, maybe not everybody knows. I'm okay with the sidewalks being built or not. It had nothing to do with, I don't own the building, so I'm going to throw that out there.
So where are we on this section of sidewalk? What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to do the improvements once we have a process in place, in the name of doing this once for the next 100 years, and having the right process, and not speeding it along. I totally understand the need for it to be replaced and want it to be replaced and accessible, but just throwing that motion out there.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I like, I like this idea, I like the motion. It's so vague in the process, and when is that process fully complete? As we do a couple tests, is it? I just want to make, I'm just, my only concern is, to think about is that we don't do anything for years, so we can't come up with a process. But maybe that's, maybe that's what we do.
Yeah, for me, the process I'm talking about is the one that comes out of the work group. And so I don't know that timeframe. And I don't know if it's an alternative to the motion, but again, I would be all right with there being professional expertise, again, as the first stop. But that's all ready, again, taking a stab at process.
I would be more comfortable with finding a way to get the work done. And it seems to me that most people would be comfortable with the HDC taking a look at it and signing off on it right now in the absence of our overall process, but for what that's worth.
Suggestion? Maybe I, we try out the idea that our attorney Reed put forward about, saying about getting on the HDC's consent agenda. If we're going to be waiting for a process in order to do this project, we're not doing it anytime soon. I don't know if this is an urgent project or not, but a group has asked that we consider extending our project. And I don't think we mind at all getting on the consent agenda and see how that goes. Maybe that will turn out to be the process. I really don't know. But if we're going to get hung up there on lots of details about how exactly things have to be done to replace a bunch of broken concrete, then I don't know if we're going to get this project done before summer, but why don't we give it a try and see what the reaction is?
Okay, Ray? Come up to the mic before you start talking.
So when something goes on the consent agenda, it's an application, and it's sort of the normal process that I described earlier. In other words, you get a certificate. John, our administrator, reviews that. None of the other board members see it unless they actually go into the office and review it, which happens very rarely, because consent items are usually something that John looks at and says, there's no way the board wouldn't approve this. With this particular thing, I would look at it more as, I think the FAA, if I'm not mistaken, because it's a federal organization, they're exempt from our local regulatory process. So they don't have to go to the HDC. But they do. If they're putting up a tower or a building or something like that, they come to the HDC just as a matter of courtesy. We don't issue any kind of a certificate of appropriateness or anything like that. We review it, we give our comments, and they go back and do what they need to do. So I think that might be a more realistic way of approaching this particular problem for the short term.
So we could do this as a test case? Where you're not even actually issuing a certificate?
We don't vote. We just take a temperature of the board. Everyone gets to say their piece, and then we close it and move on.
So you just put it on as a separate agenda item?
Separate agenda item, exactly. You can go on other business, as you know.
I just had a related recommendation to that.
We do have a motion on the floor.
For a test case before you actually decide on your, what your policy is going to be or what you enact. I mean, I would recommend doing it that way, because you do want to reserve your rights to say that certain work is exempt. You know, so the way that Ray had just suggested, you're certainly reserving any rights, not to say that you'd exercise them. But it would be good to be able to reserve your rights on jurisdictional issues until you work out, you know, the finality of what-
you know, the finality of what your ultimate procedure is going to be.
John?
John Haddon, Land Use Specialist Town in Nantucket. First, I want to say I think everything that's been said has been good and moving in a good, positive direction, I think. I think all the ideas that have been said are good. Particularly, I agree with Matt a lot, documenting stuff is always a great thing through the HDC. Case in point, sorry, just really quick, doing an inspection today of a house downtown. It was fallen into, you know, disrepair in, you know, the early 2000s or so, covered over with trees and everything. And I only had historic photos in the file. I didn't have any current photos of how it was before the addition was actually done and rehabbed to the building. So it came down to me trying, the chimney cap, I think, was different than what originally was there, so... But I didn't have a more current photo to actually go by to compare it. So I completely agree with documenting. I completely agree with you also, Dawn, as far as, well, creating a process for the town to go through, as far as roads and sidewalks and getting approval through the town. I certainly, you know, see the concern is you don't want the HDC to be, you know, holding back the town in as far as trying to make improvements that can really happen. I mean, improving Upper Main Street to look at all the architecture up there is a great idea, in my opinion. We want to be able to share that with everybody and have that go for the long-term, long-term economics of Nantucket. People come here because it's protected, it's the land bank, it's the HDC. So developing some sort of process, whether it does go to the HDC as far as a consent agenda, that could certainly work, or just some way that we're able to document it and it does go to a meeting and it's discussed. And unfortunately, you know, as you said, the whole island is a historic district, but, you know, concentrating downtown for street improvements, I think, is certainly a greater concern than, you know, I spoke to Ray about it one time and we said, does the HDC want to review, you know, changes going on a milestone road? Like, no, I don't want to see that come to our meeting. So, but as far as downtown, you know, that's a different story, I think. So, again, I just want to reiterate, I think, developing some sort of process and to what degree it is. I'd say we don't have a process now, so applying to the HDC is, maybe is the only process right now. And if that's the process that goes forward, then that's what we stand with. And if we develop something else for, you know, road improvements, then we can do that, so.
Thanks. We do have a motion on the floor.
Can I offer a friendly to, for this particular project, it goes through the HCC consent, but any other projects?
It wouldn't be the consent, it would be a separate HDC discussion item.
I did like what Ray said about review and recommendation, so applying that, that approach to it would make sense to me, at least. I'd be all right with that based on what has been said. But it is, I think having a discussion by HDC that then provides recommendations would be valuable without necessarily beholding us to that as the be-all, end-all. So I don't know if that's a friendly, where we can vote on this one and try another motion, or what was your friendly?
To keep what you said, but just add on, I mean, for any other project, but this particular one, the extension from, you know, Locksaw Trap to Salem, for it to go through that HCC process.
I don't know if it's, the way you worded it originally, I think, was not quite there, was saying not to do it until the process was in place.
So let's vote that down and someone make another motion.
Okay, let's take a vote on that original motion. All those in favor? Yes. Any opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, now we can...
Unanimously opposed. Does someone want to try another motion?
Make a motion that we proceed with the work to Salem Street after review and recommendations from the HDC as a test model for a future process.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously.
But we're also going forward with...
And we're also going forward, and I think that it would be valuable for more internal discussion with John and with Ray about establishing the process. Did you have a quick comment? We need to move on to the next item.
I know we're all really tired and that's part of what's making it so hard, but it's been an incredibly valuable discussion. My point about the Artists Association was really that we're a modern building, we were built 20 years ago and we are ADA compliant. And because we're ADA compliant, when the wind is from the northeast or when the tide comes up over the curb, our building floods. So I don't know, this is really a question for Mr. O'Neill, if he's raising the sidewalk, the grade to make their building, which is historic, ADA compliant, the potential, I know Jason's building has a couple steps up, so you don't have to worry about it quite as much as we do. But if the grade of the sidewalk raises, then our floor becomes a lake. So that's a different issue than just doing historic preservation.
Yeah, I think that you guys could probably talk outside of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And make sure that's not going to happen. Okay, thanks, everyone. Committee reports? Do you guys want to move on to the public hearing before we do any committee reports?
Yeah, actually, I want to go to the bathroom real quick.
Okay. Why don't we all take a two-minute break?
I have to stay here, I thought this might be a little bit...
Could everybody either go back to seats or move into the hallway because we've got to move on to the next agenda item? Yeah, there weren't enough. What was it?
Hi.
Hi.
Want to do beer?
I'm still, Erica, can you scan it in?
I have something to run by you.
Yeah, what?
Something to run by you.
Really? Wow, first time in two years, wow.
Not true.
Wow.
It's only 365 days.
Okay, we're, moving on, so if you're having conversations, please take them outside or take a seat. Okay, we're going to skip over committee reports and move on to the public hearing this evening. Okay, we will open the public hearing and... Yes, I'm opening the public hearing, but I'm making sure that I'm doing the right protocol. So the appellant will state his or her case and the reason for the appeal. Oh, just come up to the mic before you start talking and introduce yourself.
So to make things easy, our last name can be a bit intimidating, it's pronounced Squitcherino. But please feel free to refer to me as Joe and my wife as Sharon. Okay, first of all, it's late and I appreciate Madam Chair and the other board members taking the time. Please, if you're tired, hang in there. I'll try to do the same, this is very important to us. So Sharon and I are abutters to 25 Westerwick, and I just want to give a little background, which will not take long, talk a little bit about the process, and I hopefully can do all of that in about eight minutes for you, okay? By way of background, you're aware of most of this, but I think it's worth repeating. Cisco is truly a beach community. It's characterized by small lots, most of which are a half acre or about a half acre, slightly more. Many of the homes are upside-down houses to take advantage of the ocean views and the natural landscape views. The landscape is natural, but it's rapidly changing in Cisco. In our letter to the HDC as well as other neighbors in the area, we focused on three areas. So this is the letter to the HDC back in November. Three areas we focused on were permanent alteration of the landscape, permanent displacement of groundwater, and the impact of the pool on us as homeowners and other abutters and members in the community. So, permanent alteration of the landscape, it's clear. Cisco is a, is different from, let's say, town where there's a lot of natural vegetation and vistas. And pools certainly disrupt that. And it's really not in line with the town master plan. And that is maintaining a sense of place because this pool and other pools, it could be approved in the future, will erode a sense of place. The second area that we focused on to the HDC was permanent displacement of groundwater. That is not within the jurisdiction and the purview of the HDC apparently, so they didn't deal with that. But let me give you a little background on that. Gilbert Holgate contacted me, I did not know Gilbert prior to that, he's the owner of Holgate Drilling on Nantucket. And he raised the concern about permanent displacement of groundwater in Cisco where the water table is so high, and in some places it's 12 or 13 feet. And this also leads to a threat to the drinking water in Cisco. We all have wells. And with the proliferation of pools, groundwater becomes contaminated. The impact, the third area that we discussed with the HDC was the impact of the pool on us and our neighbors. The pool, this pool project as it was approved by the HDC, what it resulted in is the back wall of the pool is less than 20 feet from my back deck and less than 30 feet from our foundation. It's very close to our home. It's not, to kind of drive that point home, I could stand on the rail of my back deck and jump into the pool. It's that close to our home. So, that's by way of background. We have very serious concerns regarding deficiencies in the HDC's processes and deficiencies in its government, governance regarding the approval of the pool at 25 Westerwick. This is not an indictment of the HDC's overall processes and governance specifically as it pertains to this project. So, the governance concerns specifically a conflict of interest. Mr. Dutra is an associate member of the commission, he owns a pool and design company, an installation company called Nantucket Pools. It's difficult to see how Mr. Dutra can be objective and not biased when providing input and voting on proposed pool projects. An example of this is the night after the HDC approved the pool that we're, the project that we're appealing, which was on December 19th, Mr. Dutra passionately spoke at a building, at a Builders Association meeting and then handed out a petition to get, hoping that people would sign it, and I'm sure they did, in opposition to the citizens' warrant that was in place then for pools, that was subsequently withdrawn, obviously. He continued his efforts throughout the winter, emailing tradespeople, notifying them that this was looming and that they needed to vote against it. Now, he's entitled to his own personal opinions, but as a voting member and a member of the HDC, it's inappropriate, at a minimum, at a minimum, in my opinion, to conduct himself that way. And in addition, it's a conflict of interest and biasness comes in. And let me give you the last point on that issue. The general contractor for this project at two HDC meetings, so this is the general contractor who's going to install the pool, on two, at two separate meetings, said the location of this pool, it's not appropriate, it should not be put there. Mr. Dutra, nor for that matter any other HDC member, did not ask the question, well, why? Why is it not appropriate? No questions were asked, there was no discussion. And if you were to listen to the recordings, two separate occasions, he said it is not an appropriate place for a swimming pool. So that's the conflict of interest and biasness issue, which is significant. Then there's the integrity of the approval process, and by no means, I want to reiterate, am I indicting or complaining about the overall HDC approval process as it pertains to this project. And what happened? The approved plans for the project that the HCC approved had the pool size at 38 by 18. The dimensions of the pool on the certificate of appropriateness are 45 by 20. 38 by 18 is what was approved, and what was on the certificate of appropriateness was 45 by 20. How does that happen? To me, what that says is that there was a complete breakdown of controls and checks and balances for this project. So now we're to the personal impact and appropriateness of the pool. Throughout the approval process, and there were, I don't know, four or five meetings on this project, the GC was told to, repeatedly told, to move the pool closer to my property. Why? They wanted to get it away from a public way, which is a private road, but that's within their jurisdiction, of course. But by doing so, as I said... But by doing so, as I said, the pool is now 20 feet from my back deck. And the HDC has repeatedly said that they're very confident that the pool will be invisible from the public way. Well, why move it so close to my home? Again, this is a personal concern that I have. It's not within the purview of the HDC because they're only concerned about public ways. But where is it said that our and our... The other abutters and our neighbors who have reverse living homes, upside-down houses, why shouldn't our needs and issues be taken into account? So I just want to reiterate that this pool is right on top of my house. It's 20 feet from my back deck. Intentionally so. The last one or two points, voting. So voting on a pool at 12 Westerwick Way, Mr. Gagliano is here. The vote on that was three to two in favor. The vote on mine was two-two, tied. The vote here for his appeal was two-two. There's an elephant in the room. Something's happening, right? Something's happening. And I've heard repeatedly throughout the process, "We understand the concerns of the abutters. They have a valid concern." Well, you know, what are we going to do about that? We can continue to kick the can down, the proverbial can, down the road, right? Or we can take the bull by the horns and do the right thing here. I want to come back to... I talked a lot about my personal concerns and our abutters and the public way, et cetera. But I want to come back to the real issue here that this board has to consider, and that is the arbitrary nature of the decision. Whether it be conflict of interest, whether it be pushing the pool closer to my house, whether it be the certificate of appropriateness not being prepared correctly, it's all there. So that's the extent of my remarks. Any questions? Thank you.
Hello again. Ray Poole for the record, Chairman of the HCC. I'm going to keep it short because we had a similar discussion. Most of us had a similar discussion for a similar type application in the same neighborhood three or four weeks ago. First of all, I would like to say that, you know, our board feels for Sharon and Joe and the other neighbors in that neighborhood, or any neighborhood for that matter, that look down on a pool that happens to be in the yard right next to theirs. And one of the unfortunate sort of conditions in Cisco is that most of the houses out there are upside-down houses, which means that the living space is on the second floor. There's usually a deck associated with that. And in the case of this particular application, Sharon and Joe's deck looks down right on the spot where the pool was approved. However, our... We are empowered, our board, the Historic District Commission, is empowered to vote on architectural features that are visible from a publicly traveled way. We do not have any jurisdiction over private views. If we did, I think things would be a lot more complicated and we'd be spending a heck of a lot more time reviewing projects. It's also... I'd like to discuss just for a moment the arbitrary and capricious aspect of all this. This is an appeal before the select board who are charged with deciding whether the... My board, the Historic District Commission, acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner. What that means is, you know, you might not agree or disagree with whether a pool is permissible in this area, but what you have to look at is whether our board deliberated in a way that was consistent with similar applications over the years. And as you can all probably guess, because of the warrant article that was floated back in the fall, we had a huge number of pool applications coming through. And I can say with a great deal of assurance that not only did we spend the same amount of time reviewing and scrutinizing this project as we did the others, but because of the degree of scrutiny that the neighbors were giving it, we spent more time. And so, to Joe's point, this was reviewed five times. It's not uncommon for us to review a pool on the first application or the second application. So this went through a very rigorous review process. I could go on. I will say that we were satisfied, at the end of the day, that the pool would be invisible from any public way. That was through a combination of fencing and vegetative screening and birmingham, et cetera, et cetera. And just so you know, it's become practice on our board to append a condition on our approval that says, "The pool will be invisible from any public way at the time of inspection." That is when John Haddon, our administrator, goes to sign off on the project and in perpetuity. Meaning that if someone lets the screening go or cuts the screening down and somebody sees that, they can come down to the HCC and say, "I see the pool." And that can happen in June, that can happen in January, whenever. And if that does occur, then the owner needs to supplement the vegetation such that the pool is invisible and will remain so. So I won't get into the details. I submitted a rebuttal to the appeal that has bullet points. I'm not going to read it, but I will certainly entertain any questions that you might have for me. Thank you.
John Haddon, Land Use Specialist, town in Nantucket. Just to... I'd like to make a point that, as through my position through the town, I'd like to take a neutral stance on this. Obviously, I work for the HDC, but also I help the general public as well. So with that being said, I just wanted to clear up Joe's point, Mr. Squitcherino. In regard to the approval, what's on the application, which was 45 by 20, I think, and then the stamped approved plans is 38 by 16. So this is not an uncommon thing at all. Many houses come in and they're 100 feet in length or something, and the HDC at the end approves something that's 82 feet in length or something. That doesn't translate over to the application itself because the application comes in, that's the initial submission. So, you know, really don't go back, unfortunately, and make corrections to the applications. At this time, we don't require that a new application be submitted with, you know, the updated dimensions and everything. It really goes onto the stamped plans. So the dimensions on what's on the stamped plans is what was approved. So I just want to go over that. Yes. Yes.
That happens regularly?
No, it came in.
It got smaller. It got smaller.
It was approved smaller than what the initial application called.
That is correct. But what was approved?
You need to come to the... Yep.
So it was approved smaller? Just to be clear.
I may have misheard. But just to be clear, what was approved was 38 by 18. What is on the certificate of appropriateness is 45 by 20.
Which happens first?
The approval. The approval takes place, and then the certificate of appropriateness is prepared.
When you apply to the HDC, you fill out a COA, and that's your application. And that's what gets signed, but the actual approval is separate from that.
And the plans get physically stamped because things do change from the original.
So I guess my question, was it stamped larger than it started or was it stamped smaller?
Smaller.
Yes. But we just, you know, I was an observer in the last discussion, and I heard the importance of the certificate of appropriateness, and that was brought up a number of times. And if the certificate of appropriateness does not reflect what is approved, what is the importance of the certificate of appropriateness? And what legal recourse does one have? So anyway, but the other thing that I'd like to... The other thing that I'd like to raise here is that Mr. Poole Ray did a very good job of summarizing the HDC's responsibilities and the amount of time, and I agree with it, that they spent on this project. But he didn't address the conflict of interest with Mr. Dutra. The certificate of appropriateness was discussed, not satisfactorily for me, but that's just me. I'll come back to that later if necessary. And the fact that the general contractor for the applicant has stated twice in the meeting that it is not an appropriate place for a pool, and no one asked one question, including Mr. Dutra. How can there not be a conflict here? How can there not be? Thank you.
Can I just ask? I don't see Mr. Dutra on here as a voting member.
He voted on Mr. Gagliano. He provided input.
You can't talk from back there. Because we have people listening that aren't here.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Dutra was not a voting member on my project, but he was a voting member on the pool at 12 Westerwick. However, he did provide input to the HDC on this project, but, you know, well, I stated my case about his biasness before.
Okay. We'll open this for public comment now.
Hi, I'm Jay Maroney at 29 Rhode Island. I'm representing the landowners with Cohen &amp; Cohen. We agreed that if I talked, it would be less time than if Stephen talked, so we're doing you that favor.
Thank you.
So just wanted to reiterate that Mr. Dutra was not a voting member on this application, so there can't be conflict. He is allowed to speak as a public citizen and provide input to the HCC, as is any citizen of the town. Anyone in a public hearing is allowed to participate. So whether or not he happens to be a member or not is irrelevant. He's allowed to speak. I think that what we really need to get to is that the heart of the matter is just the standard of review, and it's arbitrary and capricious. And I think Mr. Poole's letter shows very well that, you know, in no way was this an arbitrary and capricious decision. I mean, the HCC held their rules and bylines, bylaws, had a very thorough process, and came to a decision that implements those bylaws. We talked a lot today during the sidewalk discussion about having processes and respecting processes. And here we have a process that has gone through and come to a decision that's within those guidelines. And going outside and substituting the select board's opinion over the HCCs just invites destruction of those processes and would just bring the HCC to the select board level. And so I urge you to affirm the HCC's decision. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Yes.
Joe Gagliano. I live at 10 Westerwick Way, four houses away from Joe. In fact, I was up here last month appealing a pool decision on the HDC. I'm here in support of Joe's position with respect to the pools. He's iterated all the things I've said before. In addition, I'm sure everyone here knows that we grow to love the areas that we live in, and we feel that the pools are not a part of the integration of what Cisco is. You know, the flat areas that are there, the small lots, the upside-down houses, all the natural shrubbery. People come from the island to see the sunrises and sunsets in that area. It's just a beautiful area. That's what we feel, the pools, if they continue to grow in that area, are going to infiltrate into something that is a preservation that we would like to hold as beauty for the area. In addition to that, this pool in particular, in relationship to Joe and Sharon's house, you can see it from the dining room, you can see it from the kitchen, you can see it from the deck, you can see it when you are in the bedroom. It is an invasion visually. It's an invasion from a noise level, and it's an invasion from a light level, putting lights that will be there for the pool that's necessary. So from two aspects, from the community, that we've both gotten a number of letters from, got a number of phone calls, we've gotten people that have stopped us in cars as we walk down the street on Westerwick and express their concern about pools in Cisco that we live with. So it's from the community, from the natural resources that we see and we love and we enjoy. And also particularly in this instance, for the invasion of the privacy of Joe and Sharon, from every single room that they have on the upper floor, they see this pool that's in their face. I just want to take two minutes of your time and mention how I feel in support of Joe. Thank you.
Thanks.
What's fascinating to me about this conflict of interest discussion is that... And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Jay.
Jay. Jay stated that he wanted to point out that Mr. Dutra was not a voting member on this project. But he was on Joe's. There is either a conflict of interest or there is not. For a board member or an associate board member, I believe that's his title, whatever Mr. Dutra's correct title is on the HDC, to go out to a Builders Association meeting the night after my pool, or Mr. Evans' pool, was approved, and passionately speak about the citizens' warrant and then hand out a petition and get signatures, is not appropriate behavior for a board member. It is not appropriate behavior for a board member to continue an email mailing campaign throughout the winter to tradespeople, you know, trying to defeat the citizens' warrant. Now, that's perfectly fine if he's a normal citizen. He's on a board. He can't do that, in my opinion, okay? And then to hear the GC, the general contractor, say to him, "It is not an appropriate place for a pool," and he didn't ask one question. What does that say? What does that say? I'll end it there. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Steve?
Good evening, Stephen Welch. I actually am an HCC associate. I did not sit on this application. I wasn't going to stand to speak except for the gentleman just spoke again on this issue of conflict of interest. And I think it's important. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention silence is not consent on that point. No one has spoken to it, John Haddon or our chairman, Ray Poole. I think they just didn't believe that it needed to be addressed because it wasn't a real matter. However, I want to clarify a couple of things, if I may. One, it's my understanding and belief, my experience with Mr. Dutra is that he will recuse if he has a financial interest or any matter that would make him impartial, not impartial. And I believe that is the standard. The other thing that I'd like to just state is, because I think that this flavor may flavor your decision, which is why I'm mentioning it at all, is that there's a difference between sitting and providing public input at the request of other members for expertise on a subject matter and going out and speaking against something that harms your livelihood. It may be considered a conflict of interest, but it isn't in this instance. In fact, Mr. Dutra speaking on a pool, either for certain conditions that might allow it to be passed, which I believe, I don't remember exactly the circumstances, was the case. He's undermining his own financial interest because he's not doing the pool. So he's supporting someone else getting the job. So I just... I want to clarify that he does recuse if he feels that there is any potential that he can't be impartial or if he has a financial interest. And I do not believe that acting on matters that affect the whole community, even if they affect you directly, is a conflict of interest under the... Specifically, under the conflict of interest law. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not representing Jesse Dutra tonight, but I just felt it was important to bring those up. Thank you.
Are there any further public comments? Board questions? Are we ready to close the public hearing? Do you have questions?
I do. I just have a couple of questions for Ray Poole. I just was wanting... It's more about process. I was just wondering about the whole process of public comment and who votes and who recuses. Val Oliver was recused from this throughout the entire decision-making process, but she commented quite a few times during the public comment.
Right.
I'm wondering if that's normal, if that's appropriate or...
So Val recused from this project because she had done work before with the owners of that house. So obviously, you know, in a case like that, she has to recuse. But taking Val, but also taking Jesse's comments...
taking Val, but also taking Jesse's comments, what Stephen just said is absolutely true, which is, you may not be voting on the project, but I encourage any member of the public who's got an opinion on a project that's before us to voice their comments and concerns. And that includes people that are on my board. But it's very clear, we state with absolute clarity, who is, who the actual voting members of the board are at the time. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess it's not, it seems different from sort of the policy that we followed for this board, but that could be just the way that we operate versus how you operate, so...
All I can, my response to that is, you know, before I was on the HDC, I've been on for five years now, before I was on the HDC, that was a normal sort of course of events, which is, you know, if somebody else wants, a non-voting member wants to speak as a member of the public, that's permissible.
A couple more questions. And I think the difference for me was, that makes sense. It's more when they're officially recused is where it seems a little bit more of a gray area, but that's fine. The other question I just had was...
The irony there is, Val was working as the architect for the owners and was against the pool.
She spoke against them.
It's not like she was saying, "Hey, pass this pool." You know, "My owners want this pool," so...
No, that's why, you know, it did catch my eye. And again, it's more to do for the process, related to the process as opposed to which side she stood on the decision, just trying to understand what the process is. I was also wondering why John McLaughlin was voting throughout until the last meeting, and then he recused himself on the last one.
John has been prone to do that, unfortunately. I don't really know what to say about it. He'll be on an application, and then he'll decide that he wants to recuse. And when you recuse, you don't really need to express the reasons why you're recusing. And so we never query him on that, and we take it at face value. So I don't have an answer for you, other than that, it's not the first time that's happened.
One more. I may as well.
Go ahead.
And then, just again, similar with Diane Coombs, she voted on one of, at one of the, at one of the many reviews that it went through, but then only was participating in public comment. So how does that, why would she vote on one?
Did you say voted on one of the many reviews?
I believe so, yeah.
Not a vote. You mean, she was participating in the discussion as a, as a voting member, perhaps?
She was listed as being a voting member.
Okay.
Unless I, and I will say...
Here, I'm going to give you an explanation for that, and maybe Mr. Haddon can back me up on that. When you have an application before the HDC that's going on for weeks, what tends to happen is, somebody goes on vacation, somebody's sick, and so there's this attrition that takes place. You start out with five voting members, and occasionally we'll be down to the bare minimum. We'll be down to three people, which is the absolute minimum for a quorum, because we have lost people to attrition. They go away for two weeks, you know, they go on vacation, and if you're familiar with the mullin rule, if you miss one meeting, you can mullin back in, if you want to. If you miss two meetings, you're out. You cannot get back on the board. And so I'm just guessing that if Diane started out in the process, and then she was off, it would have meant that she went on vacation somewhere, didn't mullin back in, and then was just offering up, once again, public comment as opposed to comment as a voting member.
Okay.
Does that sound right, John?
It looks like maybe when she voted, it was just to hold all the applications over till the following Tuesday. I'm just going through this again.
Oh, well, that could be too.
And I'm trying to find the one, again, where I noticed it. And I will say, I might have glanced at the 12 Westerwick, which was just below it, as opposed to 25 Westerwick. So with Diane's vote, I did, I noticed just that she was participating throughout in the public comment, but never as a voting member, other than the hold. So again, just trying to understand the process of who's voting, when, where, and why.
Right. Was my explanation clear?
It was. It was a good explanation regardless.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we still have the public hearing open.
I have a question for Mr. Haddon.
Come to the mic.
Bob Little. I have a question for Mr. Haddon through you, possibly. I may have misheard you, but there are three steps in the HDC process, application, approval, and certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta take it to the mic.
So I think I heard you say that the application stated a request for a pool that was 40 by something. The approval was the 38 by something. But then the actual was the 40 by. Is that, is that what I heard you said?
No.
John, can you come to the mic to answer that?
So as kind of discussed, this went to five meetings, and what happens often when applications go to a number of meetings, when they first, when an application is first submitted, of course, they're, bad reference, going for the home run ball. And over the course of review by the HDC, you know, certain things are deemed appropriate or not appropriate, and, you know, the size is appropriate. So what happens is, the application stated 45 by 20 feet. Over the course of the review, the pool was reduced to 38 by 16, or 38 by 18, I'm not sure, the final number. But that's, that was the plan that was reviewed by the HDC. And that plan that was reviewed by the HDC is what gets stamped approved. So the COA is issued down at the town clerk's office, it was issued and then recorded at the town clerk's office. Unfortunately, the way that our system works now, the applications, you know, aren't updated. So the COA is a copy of the application itself. It just has a COA number added to the application. So, and as I said, our system, we just, we're not at a point where we constantly update the application, you know, throughout the process every time. I mean, a roof pitch might change, the size of the trim might change, you know, so it'd be pretty labor-intensive to have to go back and change all of this.
I've been through the HDC process many, many times, and I respect the process. But what you alluded to was asking for a horse, selling for a pony, and then putting on a horse. So if the approval was for 38 by 18, and what was built was the 40 by whatever, that's the asking for a horse and pretending to settle for the pony, but building the horse. So I'm not making a comment on pools, but it's process. And I do respect the HDC process, immensely. And I heard, I heard a little bit of you on my radio, coming home from a Builders Association meeting, ironically.
There's a little too much cross-interaction in the audience.
I needed to ask that question. It's a process question.
George, could you address that? About the practice?
I apologize, but I lost the train of what was going on there, because I missed, you know, I just lost the point with the cross-talk between the people. I had a couple of comments about process that's followed. Number one thing about the Certificate of Appropriateness, you know, it's like when you quote-unquote pull a building permit, but it's not really a building permit, and then later you get the approval on there. So the HDC uses as their application the actual form for the Certificate of Appropriateness. And so they fill out, that constitutes the application, and then later on, after the vote, there'll be, you'll see a space on the, on that form for them to indicate their vote. Then it becomes a Certificate of Appropriateness, but until then, it's an application. So from what Ray and John had described here, it looked like whatever was applied for originally, what was voted was reflected in the approved certificate that's under appeal. Well, the plan, now I'm talking, I apologize, Madam Chair.
Yeah, no, that's the, that's the confusion here, is that...
If it incorporates, if it incorporates a plan, then that's also the same thing as what I'm saying. In other words, you fill out the application, that will reflect certain information. Then there's a form where they indicate the vote when it was issued. And sometimes you'll incorporate plans. I don't know. But if, if in fact, what was approved was less than as reflected on the Certificate of Appropriateness under appeal, that would be a problem. But I don't think that that's what...
So can I, can I kind of try, can I try to piece it together?
Someone find out what's happening, please.
Because, so what happens is, the application gets filled out, and then during the process, the information changes. The plans change that are submitted. They get whittled down to something different. When the Certificate of Appropriateness is finalized, they put their signature on it, but then they take the number and stamp each individual page of the plans, and that goes with it. They are not apparently using the practice of revising all of the original information on the application form, but then it is getting numbered, and it is getting signed, and it is getting put with the plans, with the stamp with the number on them. So I think the question is whether that process is okay.
That would be sufficient, because if it's identifying the plan that's incorporated in that is the approved plan, that is proper.
Even though it's different than what the original information was. That's what I think we're trying to get a handle on.
Can I just give you a little vignette to show you how it worked? I just did, went to the HCC for an addition to my own house. And so you fill out the application, which is a triplicate, right? It gets torn apart and goes to different places. During the process, they asked me to add a porch. So the architect redraws the plans with the porch, goes to the HCC. The HCC stamps those plans, and that's what's actually approved, even though they sign one of the triplicate forms saying that as a Certificate of Appropriateness. So it's the stamped plans that go forward to the builder, and it's built, and then inspected by the building inspector. So the smaller pool, or in my case, the addition with a porch, is what is actually built.
Yes.
Hearing that, it just, it just confirms that the process is flawed, right? What is the significance of the Certificate of Appropriateness, right? It's supposed to reflect that the project is appropriate and it's been approved. If it has erroneous information on it, it's a flawed process.
Okay.
Only, I would say it's flawed only if they build, only if they build that, and no one catches it.
Somebody could though.
No, I understand, but I'm saying...
Somebody could. We're talking about process here.
But what I'm hearing is that they are going off the second set of plans. That they're going, I understand, but if they actually are inspecting the second set of plans, and it's marked on the original, and they're inspecting a second set, then I don't think that's necessarily a issue.
Okay, it's sloppy. At a minimum, it's sloppy. What I don't want to have happen here is that this be, from my perspective, I'm sorry, this being the centerpiece of this discussion, because the conflict of interest is a much bigger, bigger issue.
Okay, so let's, I think we're going to need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, well, yeah.
George, go ahead.
The final, the final word, though, on that incorporated a plan, I mean, that commonly happens in a land use permitting decision. It ends up, whatever, you've got to have specificity about what you're incorporating as to what's approved. That commonly happens because plans change, as long as, as you said, that there is some way of confirming what the actual approved plan is by that certificate. And it sounds like here, if they have the stamp of the Certificate of Appropriateness number on that plan, that's the approved plan that you're going by.
Final comment.
Absolute, 100%. I promise not to be steaming. And that stamped plan is what goes to the building department for the building permit, which is then goes forward and is inspected. So that's how the circle is squared.
Okay. Is it okay if we close the public hearing now? Then board discussion.
There was one thing I did want to note, and this is not public comment, this is advice of a board, because I heard this thing, and you asked a question about process. This is why I got a little confused about what process issues we're talking about. So there's that issue about incorporating a plan, what is actually approved, and is it specific as to what was approved? We've covered that. This thing about recused members, I'm just a little concerned about, that I wanted to follow up on some of the questions. If, there's a difference between a non-voting member participating in a hearing and a recused member participating in a hearing. And I've seen, your board does it properly. Whenever any of you have recused yourselves, you get up and step away and walk away from the table, and you don't participate in the, in the hearing. That's different than if you're going to be, if you're designated in a permitting matter as a non-voting member. That is appropriate to have that person sitting at the table and participate in the discussion. Even though they're non-voting, they're not going to vote on it, they're still entitled, you know, as through the chair, to give comment related to that permit application. If a member is recused, though, and I don't think the chair was saying this, if a member is recused, that member should not be sitting at the table participating in the discussion. And that led to another concern that I heard. So it sounds like the HDC entirely appropriately will hear comments from non-voting members on a particular application, but they're not hearing comments from recused members, who I would assume walk away from the table like, you know, like you do when you recuse yourself.
Unfortunately, that's not what I heard.
Recu, well, recused, a member who has been recused should not sit at the table.
There was a voting member that was recused and commented during the public comment on maybe two of the three reviews.
Yeah, no, if a member had grounds to recuse him or herself, they should not be sitting at the table participating in the discussion. So, but it sounded, I thought that the person who had the alleged conflict was not voting.
We're actually talking about a different person that was recused that commented.
Okay, yeah. They should not have...
Don, I think you get it, but do you want clarification from me?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes. So the person in question, in this case, is Val Oliver. And that was, I forget which one of you said it. Val did recuse because she had done work with the owners that were requesting the pool. She had done architectural work for the house.
Did she leave the table?
No. No, no, actually, she stood up, but she, she had things to say, not positive things, which was the irony.
But she had things to say, and she wasn't in a butter. She wasn't someone who was directly impacted, where it would give her sort of standing to get up and say something as a private citizen. She was just speaking as a citizen of Nantucket.
She recused because she had done architectural work with the people that were requesting the pool.
Yeah, I think there's a problem with that, but George could probably speak to that. And I don't want to make all the ethics determinations, because that's not my purview.
Another thing that has happened, and it would, it's closer to the line, but it would be appropriate, is, say a member is recused, then that person gets up from the table, they go into the audience, and the discussion on the hearing takes place. That individual then gets up and says, "I'm recused on this application. I'm speaking as a, as a, you know, a person who lives on the street, or somebody who's interested in the issue. I'm recused for this reason, but I'm speaking, I'm not speaking as a voting member of the board on this. I'm speaking just as a private citizen."
So then that's okay, even if they're not directly impacted?
It's not the greatest, but it's definitely something that has been done in other matters, and it's lawful to do that that way. But to kind of, it's not a, it doesn't sound here that, that was clarified.
I'm sorry. I know it's late. I'm going to go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but just since this is out in the wild, what's not reflected in the record is that Val Oliver stood up and went to the portion of the seating arrangements where the public will come and speak to the commission. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not speaking for or against how it was done. I'm just simply clarifying for the record that she did relocate to where the public speaks on the matter. She did not sit in her chairs, if you would sit here, and recuse and...
She did not sit in her chairs, if you would sit here, and recuse and comment, she relocated.
Thank you.
Closer, for, you know, that, that clarifies that they weren't sitting at the table and participating.
Okay. So, can you just lay out, George, what our actual decision-making process is here? We have a new board member.
Yes.
And the actual determination we would need to make on this.
One newly elected board member has heard this many times, but the, the new, newly elected new member perhaps has heard it before as well. But, so, in terms of your standard of review, we go under the, the Gumley versus Board of Selectment of Nantucket case, a seminal case from the Supreme Judicial Court in 1977. And that court clarified the, the, the burden of proof that you're to apply in these cases. And the, the court ruled in that case that the HDC's ruling should not be overturned unless you find it was based on a legally untenable ground, or is unreasonable, whimsical, capricious, or arbitrary. And when you apply that standard, which is a, you know, a heavy burden for an appellant to, to prove, to overturn the board's decision, you're to keep in mind that you're not to substitute your judgment for that of the board. So, in other words, if, if you think they got it wrong for aesthetic reasons, but they still, you find that they acted within their jurisdiction and applied applicable standards, you don't, you don't get to say, or it would be improper for you to overturn them by saying, you know, basing that on the fact that you may disagree with their, you know, opinion on the architectural features at, at issue. Even if you disagree with the conclusion that the HDC reached, you're not to overturn them unless it falls within the arbitrary and capricious standard. For example, if it's based on legal issues outside the HDC's jurisdiction, or it, or the, the decision is based on, it lacks evidence upon reasonable, upon which reasonable minds would deem sufficient to support it. So, that's your, it is a, so, suffice it to say, it's a heavy burden that an appellant has, bears to come before you to seek to overturn the HDC's decision. And a couple of things that came up, based on the chair's recitation of the basis for the decision. First and foremost, the, you know, whatever the, the, the reason may or may not be for it, the fact is, the statute only talks about portions of exterior, of the exterior portion of buildings or structures that are open to view, from a beach, a public way, a traveled way, a street or way shown on a land court plan, or shown on a plan recorded in the registry of deeds, a proprietor's road, a street or way shown on a plan approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, a public park, or a public body of water. So, if you find that the exterior architectural features at issue are purely visible to, from a, say, an abutting private residence, that is not sufficient for HDC jurisdiction or to overturn that. So, it's got to be visible from one of these publicly accessible viewing areas. And again, that's not a comment on how that may or may not affect an abutter, private abutter who is the only one who has a view of this structure. But it's an issue for, you know, another, another board, or another piece of jurisdiction. It's not something that's within the HDC's jurisdiction. So, if you find that that decision was based on the fact that you, it was properly, it was screened basically from a publicly accessible viewing area, then, then you would really be compelled to deny the appeal of the HDC's decision. If there's any question in your mind as to visibility from a publicly accessible area, the statute talks about things that the HDC was to consider, which would be the general design arrangement, texture, material, and color of a building or a structure in question, the location on the lot, and the relation of such factors to similar features of buildings and structures in the immediate surroundings, and the position of such building or structure in relation to the street or public way, and to other buildings and structures. But again, in terms of context, so, so, context is a big issue that HDC addresses, whether this particular architectural feature is appropriate in the context in which it's set. You know, it, something may be appropriate for, you know, an area out of the downtown that may not be appropriate for the downtown historic district would, would be an easy example. But again, when you're talking about context and surroundings and appropriateness of that, you have to be viewing it from the vantage point of a publicly accessible area. So, overall, that's the standard that you're applying here.
Here's a, I have a question, were you there? Were you here for the last hearing? I don't know, I don't think you...
Brian Riley was here.
Brian was, yeah. Because one of the questions I had is, is, it seems to me that over time, over the years, it seems to me that the standard at the HDC has changed. I remember 15, 20 years ago, the HDC did not consider bushes. They didn't, they didn't say, yes, you can hide something, you can build a berm, you can put up trees that are, you know, that will hide things in the winter. They didn't used to do that. And now they seem to do that more. And they, and they use it as a, you know, geez, we're doing a great job, look at, we're saying, they have to hide it all the time. But I remember an HDC that said, hey, you're not allowed to hide it, we, you know, because they, because they can be torn down or taken away, and, and we want to see it. And I think what we've sort of moved, you know, probably from public pressure, probably from market forces or whatever, we've seemed to move our, we've seemingly have moved our standard, you know, over my tenure here. And I'm wondering, if that has changed, what, is that allowable? Can they decide something differently 20 years later?
Yeah, I haven't, I wasn't aware of that trend. I haven't been asked about it, but it, I, I would have to say that if you were to ask me for a particular application, if, if a, if a board, if the board had conditions in their permit that you shall maintain shrubs of seven feet and they, you know, whatever it is to screen this particular exterior architectural feature, I would say that that's within their jurisdiction to do. It would create, it creates potential enforcement problems, real problems down the line of if, if it's not maintained, you know, the, if the shrubs die, or they do something else, or somebody doesn't notice that all of a sudden...
Well, yeah, back, well, all I'm saying is, back in, back, back in the day, what I remember is someone would say, well, I can paint my door orange, because I'm gonna have bushes and you can't see it. And the HDC, you, or, you know, I'm gonna put my pool here, because you can't see it. And back in the day, the HDC says, we will be able to see it, we don't consider bushes. And they'd say, you know what, that doesn't count, you know? And I had, I sat on one in the, you know, 2000s on this, on this regard, I believe. And I asked the HCC about it last time, I said, please go back and look, because I think this is an issue. And if you take, and now I think we're saying, now we can screen it, and we'll screen it this way. If you follow that to its logical conclusion, you know, people are gonna be able to big, build big, huge berms around their property and build whatever they want. And I don't think that, you know, and then if you want to talk about context, should, is context of a neighborhood, and this is probably what Val was talking about, is a bunch of berms and a bunch of privates in Cisco appropriate? And I would argue that, no, if we go down that path, that would not be appropriate.
Yeah, that's...
And, and so, how do we, how do we, as a board, put that into a decision? How do we, you know, I just think, anyway.
Twenty, you know, you, you can't give disparate treatment. So, if you're talking about something that, the way they used to do it 20 years ago, is a little different than if now they're doing different things, different ways. Oh, you can screen this one, so we'll, we'll approve it. Yeah, you can screen that one, but we don't like what you're building, so we're not gonna approve that. That would be sort of arbitrary and capricious. But if they're applying that standard, that they're saying, this is not viewable from a publicly accessible area, and they're doing that consistently across the board, then that's really not arbitrary and capricious. It, it does create a potential problem in terms of enforcement if they don't maintain that screening. And, and, and one issue that, one way that, that, it may not lessen the concern that you're raising, but the, their ability to, and their jurisdiction, their duty to look at surroundings would be relevant to that. Like, say you're in a neighborhood that has a certain exterior architecture, and, and one residence in the middle of that street, they put up, you know, hedges or giant trees, and it, it doesn't fit in with the surroundings of the fact that on the other houses on that street, you can see every part of the, of the landscape, you know, in, into the interior of that property. Then that would be an instance of them acting arbitrary and capriciously. But I, I...
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. And Matt, you heard what I was...
Ray, if you're gonna speak, you gotta come to the microphone.
And I'm really sorry to interrupt you.
This, this is, as we all know very well now, this is a difficult issue.
It is.
I'll take another abstract example. Somebody has a piece of property, I said this last time, someone has a three-acre piece of property. The HDC cannot, has no jurisdiction over their ability to go in and say, create a four-foot-high berm around their entire property. It's not within our jurisdiction, okay?
And I, I might, I'm gonna ask John, George, it might be, but keep going.
Okay, well, that would be a big surprise.
Because, no, well, because you guys can, you can dictate landscaping, you can dictate the look of a...
As it relates to a structure.
Understood, so, alright, so, we'll take your...
So, if there's no structure there...
No, there's no structure, so you don't have any say.
Correct.
Then they come, I'm gonna argue with you, because this is fun. So, then they show up.
It's fine or it's fun?
This is fun, this is fun. Then they show, let's say they show up to you, and they have a salt box, and they've got a perfectly appropriate salt box, but it's, it's, it's fenced all the way around. You could look and say, that isn't, that doesn't fit, the salt box is fine, but your landscaping doesn't fit around this property.
Do you mean bermed all the way?
Bermed, or, yeah, they built up something that's completely inappropriate.
As it directly relates to the architecture.
Understood.
In other words, if you're, if you're creating a mound and putting the house on top of it, that directly relates to the architecture. What I'm getting at, Matt...
So, but so wouldn't, so wouldn't building a, you know, a, so wouldn't building mountains around it and sticking in the middle? It's the same thing, it's not, you would be completely changing the landscape of that neighborhood. Anyway...
So, I, I think we're getting into a whole bunch of theoreticals.
No, but this isn't a theoretical, I think this is, I mean, this is...
Because there's not a berm here.
No, but, well, this is what's happening.
There is.
There is, there is, this is what's happening, and this is what's happening in these neighborhoods. This is what I, and I, and I, I see something that has changed, from, you know, from 20 years ago to now. And I'm not saying anyone did anything wrong, I think it's slowly changed. And, and that's, anyway.
Can, can you just clarify, perhaps, George, as well, is that it...
By the way, you can't prevent, we were talking about exemptions earlier, and there's an exemption, I know it's a little off point, but I did want to just point out, they, they can't prevent landscaping with plants, trees, and shrubs. But, but they could say that this is an inappropriate structure, and screening it with plants, trees, and shrubs would be inappropriate for this setting. That would be different than saying you can't plant shrubs on your property.
So, my question then is that they would have jurisdiction, that the relationship of a berm or plants isn't just to the structure, it's also to the surrounding context?
Correct, but, but again, there's an exemption, you can't stop them from, you can't prevent landscaping with plants, trees, and shrubs.
Correct.
But if, if you have an inappropriate exterior architectural feature, such as, as described by Matt, and you're seeking to, to hide that with plants, trees, and shrubs, and that is inappropriate to the setting, I would argue that that doesn't fall within the exemption, that that would be possibly something that they could deny for doing that, because it's inappropriate for that setting. It's obvious that they're screening and offending architectural feature from the surroundings. So, I think that would be a different question. I, I apologize, I can't give you a...
No.
...legal answer about the, the trend, because I, you know, it's only, they have to act within their jurisdiction. If they've trended away, you know, over a period of years, I, I don't know, you know, legally what to do about that.
To, I, I hear what you're saying, Matt, and...
The public hearing's closed, so we're not gonna take any comments from anybody else.
Even though I raised your issue?
We closed the public hearing, we're asking questions.
What I'm struggling with a little bit is that the trend has changed, it appears that it is within their jurisdiction, is not entirely related just to the structure, but to the neighborhood and the context that it's in. But we don't have a standard for the application, or we don't have a standard or a process for the application of using the lands, how we apply use of the landscape, plants, and berms in the screening. So, to me, berming in Cisco, I, I don't know that that's appropriate. We don't really have a process that we're applying to the landscape, we're using the landscape to defend decisions, but we don't have a process for how we're applying and the requirements that we're making of the landscape.
Well, berming is different than plants, trees, and shrubs. And, and, you know, again, it goes to visible from a, a public way. If they're proposing as part of their application that this is not viewable from a public way, because here's our landscaping plan that shows that we have a row of hedges that shall be maintained at a certain height, and then the board finds that that is appropriate in that particular setting. You know, some of your neighborhoods have that white fencing, as opposed to big hedges, and, but if you look at it in that, in that setting, that, that would be the only way that I, I would say that you can apply some type of, you know, consistency to the result. And, and really, only that example, kind of a glaring example that I'm giving of, a certain architectural style to a particular neighborhood, and, and, you know, one tooth in that neighborhood has this giant cypress tree or something to hide, you know, a, I don't know, a ham radio tower or something. It, it's the only way that, that really you can distinguish it. The only, the only, and, and in terms of consistency and process, this, this hat, this, this trend, if it, if it exists, that they're allowing things to be screened by landscaping, you know, at most, it creates a potential enforcement issue, because that has to, if, if they are proposing screening as the solution to a particular feature, then that has to be incorporated into that decision, that that be maintained, as Ray had said, in perpetuity.
Here's another, just another question on this, is, one of the things I heard was that to get it away from the public way, they've moved it closer to private way, to private individuals. So, you know, so, so we've, you know, we've got the standard, and so, let's, you know, we've got, you know, gotta get away from the public way, but, you know, wouldn't, so, do we have any, you know, we, we can't substitute our vision for that, but common sense would be like, share it, or, you know, the public way, if someone's living in a house, or in two or three houses surrounding a pool, constantly, the public way is hardly traveled. You know, wouldn't, and so, we don't have a chance, sometimes I think the common sense is missing. We're so, like, caught in the, follow the rule.
Unfortunately, I mean, that, applying the HDC statute, I mean, that doesn't protect a, a unique situation of an abutting property owner who gets stuck with this feature, and they're the only ones who have a view of it, and they hate it, and it, and it may be inappropriate for them to look at it, but that, that doesn't call into question issues under the Act. I mean, you know, there may be potential other jurisdiction involved, you've got to comply with setbacks and, and issues like that, that would be jurisdiction on, under other boards. But if they're...
Public hearing's closed, we can't take any more comments.
I have one more question, because you did comment that there, there's a difference between berms and the vegetative screening.
Correct.
What is that difference in relation to how the HDC can apply that?
Well, a berm, if they're arguing that this is not visible from a public accessible viewing point because of a berm, then they would need to look at the berm and, and say, well, is a berm appropriate here? And again, I give that example of a, a neighborhood with a certain historic setting, and one residence on that, in that setting, has this giant berm, then they could look at it and say, that's not appropriate for this setting, we deny that. And that's not landscaping with plants, trees, and shrubs. And really, what they're going at, what the intent of that, you know, the plain language of that exemption, landscaping with plants, trees, and shrubs, is a situation where, say, somebody is literally planting a shrub on their property. The HDC doesn't have the authority to come in and say, we don't like that, the look of that shrub.
Yep. Are we done with questions? Board discussion?
I've been quiet, I give my, my opinion for motion. I understand the butters, how, not only is it frustrating, I, you know, I feel that it's, to them, it's an injustice, and I understand that. But looking over the, the five times they looked at it, I don't think that there's a conflict of entrance, interests. I do understand why it was brought up. I don't think it's arbitrary, it's not whimsical, in my opinion. I don't think it's arbitrary, it's not whimsical, in my opinion. And I think, believe HDC acted in their jurisdiction. Again, I don't, it doesn't matter if we don't like their, you know, their final decision, it's not part of this, our decision. And Rita said that you're worried, or you're concerned, or maybe there's no standard or process in a certain area. So there's no standard or process, they then, they didn't do, they didn't make any, they didn't do anything wrong, if that's the case, right? Right, I mean, we can go back and, or we can go down the road and try to add in a standard or process, but-
I do think arbitrary would be when there is no process, then it's an arbitrary decision.
No, I, I want to disagree with that. It's almost like saying a DPW are arbitrary in their decision to rebuild a sidewalk with there's no process. So they, so until there's a process, we don't know if it's arbitrary because there's nothing to weigh, weigh it against.
I'm pretty, well, I'm not going to mince words, but I, I do think that is part of the definition of arbitrary, is that if there's no, when there, an arbitrary decision is one that is made in lack, with a lack of process. That's fine, we can disagree on that.
Yeah.
I was on the HDC for a long time, and when I was there, it, it was common practice to both landscape out pools, sink pools, and not just pools, sport courts, tennis courts, fire pits. It was very common practice to manipulate grade, to make them less visible, and to plant them out or board fence them, and all of those different types of elements to screen them from view. And then it would always be tied to the approval. So that, and I do remember a time where we talked a lot about the standards for vegetative screening and how sometimes placement wouldn't work. And there, there have been things that were denied, that I recall, and we got very into things being evergreen to properly screen in certain areas, and where privates were appropriate and other plantings were more appropriate. And I just, in looking at the record here, it seems like they went through a lot of that process that I remember. And it's really hard in Cisco. I mean, I, I, for other, you know, for the, for, I understand the neighborhood and the closeness of everything and the fact that it's been open for years, but people could put up all of these plantings with no pool in there, too.
You know, for me, I, I feel like the lack of process with the, the vegetation and the, the berming, I, we're, this is the second time that, now that we're seeing it, and the reason it's hard in Cisco is because the historical landscape doesn't allow for these kind of plants. It doesn't have berms, that's why it's difficult. And I, part of my concern with the lack of process in relation to the vegetation is that it does seem like the proposed vegetation is not within the context, or not responding to the natural landscape. There's a built landscape, but not to the natural landscape. And it is commenting on the indigenous and the evergreen nature of the, of the material. If that final planting plan, as we learned last time, is the, is the final word, it's not, it's not evergreen, and it's not indigenous, and some of the plants that are indigenous won't, would probably not survive out there. So I just think, again, it's one of those, it's not an opinion, it's just that there's no way for, at the HDC, at the moment, because we don't have a process or guidelines for how we vegetate in a neighborhood like Cisco, we end up with something that, this will probably be exposed at some point, I just, I, I'm concerned about that. If that's the trend we're going down, then we need to be more clear about how we, how we make those decisions.
I mean, that, that wasn't what I was saying, it's that those were things that have been considered in the past. There's always been a process for how to screen out some of these landscape items from view, rather than them being specifically blocked by a structure. And I think that the process is, is up to the HDC and their decision-making, and that they went through a process here. And whether we agree with their conclusion or not, I don't think there was anything arbitrary about the process with the amount of detail that was, that went into it.
Yeah, I think it's hard to over, it's hard to overturn the HDC, it is a hard, it's a hard line, but I'm also, I am concerned about what I'm seeing. I'm concerned about sort of the direction that we're heading with this, and, you know, I'm more, I'm aligning with Rita more, is, you know, the natural landscape is the natural landscape. That's what we're trying to, you know, that's what we're trying to encourage, especially in the open areas like that. And if they all turn into private hedges or, you know, year-round green hedges to hide things that might not be there normally, I think we're ma, we're taking a wrong turn. And I think, you know, the elephant in the room is the pools. There is a huge impact on, on the neighbors and on the neighborhood and on the environment, potentially with these. And sure, they can, they, people can make a lot of money with the pools and with the houses that have the pools attached, because they rent for more and they sell for a lot more. But I think that there are other issues, and, and, you know, and I understand why the pressure is on. You know, there's, the pressure is on to add these to the tourist homes, that, you know, to rent. And, and I, I think that that's, you know, that's the pressure that the HDC's under, it's the pressure the, you know, the building department, the, the health department's under, that we're under. You know, I, I remember, when I grew up, there was, there was a couple pools on island, you know, it was a white elephant and a couple others.
I think you're getting into a much bigger discussion than what the HDC's purview is.
I am, I am, but, but I think, no, it is, but I, but, but their purview is on, is sort of under, is, is kind of, because of this change, because of this sea change of how people view the island and use their houses and rent their houses, because of that sea change, I think we're under increasing pressure, and it's not fair to the neighborhoods or the neighbors at times. So I'm, I'm more along with Rita on this. I, I'm having, I'm trying to find a way to, you know, to not, you know, to support the neighbors, and I'm, I'm having a hard time finding it.
Krista?
I was just going to ask a clarification question to John, if he can answer it, but just, you know, not liking the landscaping behind it to cover it, is that making it arbitrary? Or is that, are we putting our own judgment onto this?
I think George can answer that.
Yeah, it sort of would be, it would be substituting your judgment for that of the, of the board. Because you're just, and, and the only reason I say that is, thankfully, Erica has the part of Ray's bullet points, and it said here, "Our goal in the review of this pool was to screen the pool to the extent it was invisible year-round from any publicly traveled way. In this case, we pushed for and received plant material that was indigenous and evergreen. The resulting landscape plan is certainly no more contrived or less, quote, 'natural' than the surrounding landscape.'" So what Ray is saying there is exactly the type of, of consideration that I, that I was saying earlier, is within their jurisdiction to make that finding. So that would be, that's a relevant finding directly in their jurisdiction. And then for you to, to then question that and say, well, it shouldn't have been evergreen, or it should have been, you know, I don't know what you might find it to be, but that would be a possible example of substituting your judgment for that of the HDC. In other words, they applied the relevant consideration, you just disagreed with the, what they chose to, to allow in that, within their jurisdiction.
Thank you.
And can I clarify that? I'm not saying that I dislike the landscaping. What I'm concerned about is that there appears that the HDC does have jurisdiction over how these structures and how this vegetation fits into the natural landscape and to the historically natural landscape. And I'm concerned that there's not, uh, process standards for how we do that, or that this has not been, has, has this been protected in this conversation? And I also, I do want to address, I agree with Jason on the conflict of interest, I don't want to let that slide by. I think on many of these boards, we really rely on everyone's sort of upstanding professionalism on that. I am concerned about the recusing. I, I just, I am uncomfortable with someone who's recused, who's not a director butter, coming back into the conversation and not providing comments based on, they're sort of very professional comments, they're comments similar to what would have been made as someone sitting at the table. So that's, I just, I would want to address the conflict of interest in the recusing.
I'll make a motion to uphold the HDC decision.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I'm, I'm in favor. So the motion carries, three to two. And I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I am a little bit concerned about, about best practices, that I, I think that you should be trying to have the applicants correct the application forms as they go through the process. I just think it would be better not for you to do it internally, to make them do it as, when they resubmit revisions. And I think that it would generally be a better practice if people who are recused didn't participate. Not that they can't, but unless there's like some real compelling reason why they need to participate, it would be a better practice. But this has nothing to do with this decision, that's just my comment.
I also had to, I, I speak when spoken to typically, but I wanted to, there was one issue that I, I wanted to follow up on that, since you were giving advice, which is valid, to HDC about recused members should be away from the table, not participating. If they do choose to participate, they should make it clear in what role they are giving comment. And, and one other process issue about recusal that concerned me was a member participating fully in the hearing, and then in the end, recusing himself from the vote. If, if that member has a reason to be recused from the application, he or she should not participate in the hearing, and then at the end say, I'm recused. If, if that member doesn't want to vote then, and there's not grounds that that member should have been recused from participating, that member could abstain from voting, but that's different than recusing. And that, that would definitely violate, you know, a lot of standards of being somebody who should be recused, participating, and then recusing him or herself when the vote comes up. That, that should, that should not, not occur any longer.
And that's, that is a major issue, whether you like pools or not, or you like it here or not, recusing, being there for the entire conversation and then recusing at the end, I, I just think that's very poor process.
I think that that practice is more of an abstention, but not a conflict.
If the members, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the thing, yes. If, yeah. If there's grounds to recuse, that member should not participate. If, if that member didn't have grounds that they should have been recused, they can participate and then abstain from voting in the end, but not recusing themselves at the vote, as, as you pointed out. They, they should not do that.
Thanks.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I do want to make a public comment. I, I think that any, any suggestion that the HDC bows itself to public pressures and market forces is not in com, is not consistent with any HDC meeting I've ever been to. They couldn't care less about market forces and public pressure.
Okay, let's not get into that discussion.
So they're not human.
We did have committee reports, do you got?
I can save, I had some from the Sustainable Communities Conference, but I'm happy to leave those until the next meeting.
Yep, and I have some senior center comments, but I think that I could round those out better next time because of another meeting tomorrow.
Well, I just have one quick comment, and I'm proud to be on the first board that's ever had three women on it.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty cool.
Same, thank you.
History.
Yep.
My mom would be proud.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.